It's Rod, good to see you.
Morning Nigel.
Morning Nigel. Good to see you, it's John.
I've started the recording Chairman, it's just gone 10am.
Hi, I'm Chairman.
Good morning everybody, I'm going to remove my mask to make it easier for the interpreter who will be hopefully facilitating our meeting for those that can't hear and make it a lot easier for them, I think it's a great advance for Somerset County Council. Thank you all for attending and I'll come through a few rules very, very quickly. It's only the county councillors present that are taking the decisions at this meeting. Others in attendance are there to advise the council. The agenda and papers have been published on the council's website in advance of this meeting. The council will be making an audio recording of the meeting and this will be published on the council's website in due course. I'd like to also highlight a bit of good practice that please use the meeting chat function only for the purposes of the meeting, primarily to indicate that you wish to speak. Please only speak at the chair's invitation, please say your name before speaking. There is a great importance of turning off the microphones and cameras when not speaking, with the exception of the meeting chair, this is not for me to send to you but is to ensure that we have the bandwidth so you can all take part during this meeting. Members and officers are invited to switch on their cameras when they speak. I'll now move to item one on our agenda and that is apologies for absence. I'm going to turn to Scott Woodridge to see if he has any other apologies which I'm not aware of.
Thank you Chair and good morning everybody, my name's Scott Woodridge, I'm the council's monitoring officer, well obviously providing advice to all elected members this morning in terms of the council's constitution and the meeting procedures. In terms of apologies, I've received apologies from councillor Hugh Davies, councillor Amanda Broom and I've also received apologies from the vice-chair, councillor Mark Keating and on that point I would ask for a proposer and a seconder to nominate another member of the council to act as vice-chair for this meeting. Now at that point Chair, I will pause in the proceedings just to seek a proposer for a vice-chair for the meeting.
Chairman, it's David Fothergill here, councillor Fothergill, I have a recommendation, we ask councillor Peter Clayton to be vice-chairman for this meeting, I believe that Peter is willing and very able to be able to perform that role, so I'll up my recommendation to have Peter as vice-chairman please.
Thank you Chair, on the basis of councillor Fothergill's proposal Peter Clayton, can I just check is there a seconder?
Oh, I have a second actually.
Thank you, can I just check whether there are, just in terms of the council, whether there are any proposers? Chair, I don't see any and therefore with the agreement of the council, I would suggest that then councillor Clayton is appointed as the vice-chair for this meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Fothergill, you have your hand up sir.
It's because I can't get it down at the moment I'm afraid Chair and I will keep endeavouring to learn my hand, there we are, done it.
Thank you, it's down.
Apologies.
Okay, thank you and thank you Peter for kindly turning up and stepping into the role.
Thank you.
Item two on our agenda is the declarations of interests. Details of all members' interests in district, in town and parish councils can be viewed on the council's website at county councillors' membership at town, city, parish or district councils and this will be displayed in the meeting room where relevant. The statutory register of members' interests can be inspected via request to the democratic services team at Somerset County Council. I'll move to item three, these are the minutes for the meeting held on the 18th of November 2020. Now, the minutes have been circulated and I wonder whether there are any matters arising from those minutes. I'm hearing nobody coming in, nobody indicating they wish to speak, so I take it there are no matters arising from those minutes. Can I have a proposer for those minutes please?
Chair, David Fothergill, I propose those minutes.
Thank you councillor Fothergill, can I have a seconder please?
Councillor John Woodman, I'll second those minutes.
Thank you councillor Woodman. They're duly proposed and seconded and I will sign those minutes in due course, thank you. Any matters arising from those minutes? Or last chance? No, I've heard nothing, okay, I will move now to item four on your agenda, that is the public question time. This includes the presentation of any petitions, details of any public questions and petitions that are being submitted, they'll be included in my chair's schedule which will be made available to the members and to the public at the meeting. So we're now moving to public question time. And the first public speaker that I have, I'm going to invite Mr Alan Devonham, speaking on council tax increase and debt borrowing, Mr Devonham.
I don't believe he's on the call at the moment Chair.
Thank you Mr Fothergill, in that case I will hold him in abeyance and I'll move to Mr Andrew Pope who wishes to speak on council tax increases, Andrew Pope please.
Good morning, can you hear me?
I can.
Good morning Chair.
You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much councillor, good morning, I'm Andrew Pope and I'm the leader of Somerset Independence, a pressure group and political party formed during the first Covid-19 lockdown. I speak to my written statement that's been circulated to you where I ask you to refuse the 4.99% increase in council tax. At the Police and Crime Panel recently, I asked for the £15 increase to be refused, it was, your increase is over four times higher and added to all the other increases that have been proposed across the county, it's not on. Like the county council, the Police and Crime Commissioner has repeatedly asked for increases, it's almost as if you all take Somerset's money for granted. No taxation without representation, like the Commissioner, the county has not spent wisely, like the Commissioner, millions spent on the wrong priorities, like the Commissioner hoping to get away with it, no, you can't get away with it, not during a global pandemic when residents have been sacked, been furloughed, been ill or died and businesses have folded, had to shelve expansion or lose staff. The right council services have not been delivered but your council asks for more money, is it justified? No, it's definitely not. Ofsted and Ombudsman criticism of you, unsafe roads, huge disruption, for example roadworks at Presley, you councillors are supposed to be the custodians of taxpayers' money but instead of doing that, you're not doing your jobs. The Conservative councillors are supposed to be running the council and the opposition? All have been pathetic, Lib Dem Labour or Green, you're all weak. And as today's report rightly says, there are no recommendations from four committees of scrutiny, why? How? You're not standing up for residents so members of the public like me have to do it for you as volunteers. No taxation without representation, that's how democracy is supposed to work when it comes to public money, our money, if you don't spend it wisely, we vote you out, if you don't oppose properly, we vote you out. Lib Dem Labour, Green or Tory, same old story, so out you go, but the majority of your councillors even voted to stop us voting you out, not because of the dangers of Covid-19 which might be sensible, you did it merely to protect your own allowances, to protect your own Tory party and to back up your own proposal to change our councils and continue to misspend millions of pounds of public money. You asked for more millions, you stopped residents delivering their verdict at the ballot box and the merry-go-round continues, no.
Thirty seconds, you have thirty seconds.
No taxation without representation, when the time comes, even if elections are delayed, Somerset residents must vote you out. You have the opportunity councillors today to show that you stand up for Somerset residents, this is your chance, I suggest that you take it and vote this budget down to make the Tories think again, thank you for listening.
Thank you, I'm going to call on councillor Mandy Chilcutt to reply, just remind everybody there is no debate on public questions but councillor Chilcutt will reply. Councillor Chilcutt.
Mr Pope, thank you for your statement and I will respond to the statement that's been publicly published. I know that you ask this as a leader of a form of a political party so I'll respond in that same tone. I have to say I find it extraordinary that you're advocating a real-time cut in support for our most vulnerable people, that at a time of a pandemic when our care homes are under such extraordinary pressure and our schools desperate for all the support we can give them, you seem to think the most appropriate course of action is not to invest in our adults and children's services as we propose but instead reduce their funding. I'm hoping that we'll have some cross-party support for our budget proposals today and that single demonstration of understanding of our budgets, the huge amount of care that we give. the huge amount of care that we give and the need to invest all we can in our key care services is what underpins everything within this budget, and that sends a strong message to you and your political party. You make totally unfounded allegations about misspending and offer no evidence, so I will offer some evidence to help you out. Our accounts are prepared by qualified accountants, our finance director who has a statutory position. These accounts are then audited by an independent organisation and then signed off. We're open and transparent in this process and anticipate all our spending, excuse me, all our spending will be signed off by our auditors. During the pandemic, we have voluntarily provided relevant spending details to governments to enable them to approve our Covid spending. As the Prime Minister has recently acknowledged, this has been welcomed and again given a clean bill of health. In your statement, you foolishly accuse us of squirreling away Covid funding in a reserve. Please let me remind you, this pandemic is far from over. We'll need to spend this Covid money on combating this virus and its impacts for many months to come. If by squirreling away you mean prudently and with common sense, we are setting aside some funding for the costs that we're inevitably to become, and that we can agree on. As to your points about unitary status, we're in a government-driven consultation and will play our part in that. Be under no illusion, this is a government consultation that will lead to a decision by the Secretary of State. It is not in this council's hands as to what, if any, local government reform will be put in place. But we are clear that we believe one Somerset is by far the proposal that will have the biggest impact on our residents in Somerset with more investment, better services and a joined-up approach that will improve lives in our county. Finally, a response to your highly inflammatory comments about this council's work during the pandemic and your charge that we have failed our residents. I have nothing but praise for our staff, our partners, our volunteers and all councillors across our county. And by that I mean that this council, our districts, our towns, cities and parishes, who've worked so hard and so long to carry out the government's message, protect the NHS and save lives. It's more than disappointing that you believe it's right to criticise this effort. And I know that all councillors in this meeting will agree with me that our staff's leadership, dedication and enormous efforts have been instrumental in helping manage this crisis. And I have no doubts whatsoever that they have saved lives. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Chilcutt. I'm going to try again, see if Alan Devonham has joined us. Alan. Mr Alan Devonham, are you with us? Alan Devonham. Can you hear me? No.
It's Nigel Bean.
Okay, I'm going to move then straight to Nigel Bean, who will talk on the Reform of Health and Care Services. Nigel Bean.
Thank you, Chair. Was this the quality and coronavirus question first about public health and wellbeing and climate?
I understand it is, Nigel. You're the one that's speaking, so I can't help you on that. All I have is, you're shown down here is the Reform of Health and Care Services.
Quality and climate change.
Right, I I beg your pardon. It's my error, but you are right, Nigel. Air quality and climate change. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I won't read it all out, it's a bit wordy. But the first question relates to the report that's in the papers and about the air quality management areas and about carbon dioxide concentrations have continued to increase currently, and yet, you know, there was an indication that the air quality has improved. So question one is, whilst it's not too surprising, given the magnitude of the pandemic-induced reaction, that the Taunton and Yeovil AQMA's have have achieved compliance with mandatory standards for the first time. How does the council intend to maintain compliance without transferring the problem elsewhere? And will the climate emergency strategy be put into reality, i.e. include practical actions and measurable specific targets to prevent increases in carbon dioxide and other greenhouse gas concentrations? And the second part of the question relates to the recent death, well, Environment, Food and Rural Affairs Committee report from the 11th of February. I won't read out some of the bullet points, but basically it's about air quality and traffic, etc. And basically, what steps and practical and what practical steps and measures can the county council, along with other local authorities, take to act and respond to these key findings? That's of the Environment Committee report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Nigel. Thank you. I'm going to invite councillor Claire Paul to respond to you. Councillor Claire Paul.
Thank you very much, Chair. And thank you, Nigel, as well for your questions. If I may, I'll take them both together now. So air quality compliance is a district council function, but we will continue to provide support to them as they consider any necessary amendments to their air quality action plans in both Taunton and Yeovil. As you know, carbon dioxide and other greenhouse gas emissions are not the sole contributor to local air quality issues. So different strategies are needed to address both climate change and local air quality. However, some of the actions will undoubtedly be complementary. For example, we have recently, in conjunction with district councils and Exmoor National Park, developed a countrywide strategy to support the strategic approach to the rollout of electric vehicle charging points across this county. A strategy that will address both carbon emissions and air quality across Somerset. We are in the process of further developing our climate action plans. However, as I've noted, many actions are already underway. Somerset's draft air quality strategy was put on hold whilst the climate change strategy was under development to ensure that the two were compatible. For the last year, the officers at county and district councils who were working on air quality alongside other duties have, of course, very largely been working on Covid-19 matters. Due to the reduction in road traffic through lockdowns, air quality was improved during 2020. But it is recognised that there is a risk that motor traffic could increase beyond previous levels if people prove reluctant to return to public transport or to cycle and walk where it's feasible. This could, of course, worsen air quality in the short term, as well as other public health factors such as our physical activity and our obesity. In the last week, air quality officers have briefly discussed the need to revisit the draft air quality strategy to revise and make fit for purpose as soon as Covid situation allows. Hopefully, this summer. This will include consideration of developments in policy and practice, such as the documents referenced in your question. It will have a particular focus on achieving compliance with legal limits in Yeovil and Taunton air quality management areas and will consider other air quality issues, such as the use of solid fuels, for example, wood burning stoves. Members will all be aware that the Active Travel Cell has been working throughout the pandemic to improve provision for active travel, walking and cycling. In the first phase, this was focused on ensuring social distancing in shopping streets. In the next phase, schemes are being brought forward to provide new cycle routes in order to enable more people to cycle for everyday journeys. Local cycling and walking infrastructure plans are in development for Taunton, Yeovil and Bridgewater and can play an important part in securing local and national capital funding for cycle routes that have been identified as high priorities for this investment due to the high potential usage they would for new and existing cyclists. Many of the measures proposed as part of the climate change strategy are expected to have a strongly beneficial impact on air quality in our towns, including electrification of the vehicle fleet. However, it is important to note that particle emissions from tyres and brakes are an important element of vehicular air pollution and are likely to increase proportionally if we simply switch from motor vehicles to electric, like for like, given the much heavier weight of the latter. Electric buses and car clubs have much potential for reducing the numbers of vehicles on the roads in urban areas and thus reducing particulate as well as gas pollution. Secondly, you refer to the air quality and coronavirus report, and you're seeking information about the practical steps and measures that Somerset County Council will take to act and respond on these key findings. Thank you, Nigel, for your question.
Thank you, councillor. I'm going to turn to Nigel Bean now to invite him to ask his second question. Nigel Bean, Reform of Health and Care Services.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, this is quite a topical subject, the integration of health and social care at the moment, and Matt Hancock's made a few announcements. But, and I'll quote from the submission there. And if parity expected between the NHS and social care, as the government suggests, then staff should have similar pay and conditions, that's health and social care staff. At the moment, coworkers are typically paid only £8.67 per hour, barely above the minimum wage, and a quarter of them are on zero-hours contracts. The Association of Directors of Adult Social Services, I believe there may be members at Somerset, has called for wages to be linked to the pay of band three NHS healthcare assistants, that's the gender for change band, who would do a similar job but earn £10.90 an hour and have much greater security at work. That would be both logical and fair. Coworkers from abroad should have the same immigration rights as NHS staff in a truly integrated system. Will the council campaign for these reasonable proposals to be applied across the care sector, including private sector organisations that receive cash for providing care from local government commissioners? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Bean. I'm going to invite councillor David Huxtable to reply.
Chairman, thank you, and thank you, Nigel, for your for your question. I have a lot of respect and sympathy for your views. I will say that Somerset has long been at the forefront of the campaign, led by councillor Fothergill, for fair and permanent funding solutions for social care and those who work within it. Only last week, we highlighted the dedication and courage of this workforce in a powerful film which highlighted the sadness and challenges that Covid has brought the social care sector, as well as our NHS colleagues. We're also one of the first authorities to support the Unison Stop the Spread campaign for full pay for those ill or isolating with Covid, and have worked with our providers to maximise the Covid grant funding for this purpose. We continue to raise awareness and understanding of the fantastic job that those who work in this sector do every day to support our residents. Only a permanent funding settlement for social care will enable an open debate on the specific wage parity in your question. A balance and equality within health and social care is indeed long overdue, and we will continue to work on this with local partners, making the most of opportunities presented by NHS reform announced last week. Our HR leads are already working on joint apprenticeships and training across NHS and social care provision. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Huxtable. I now see that Mr Alan Devonham has arrived, and Alan, good morning to you. If you can hear me, can you indicate? Alan Devonham? Alan, no, we can't seem to hear you. I shall ask our commispeople to see if they can connect with you. In which case, I shall move to Lucy Travis, and she wishes to speak on buses in Somerset. Lucy Travis, please. Lucy Travis, can can you hear me? Lucy Travis, please. No, I'm not getting you if if you are there, Miss Travis. Alan Devonham, are you with us now?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you. You're very faint, Mr Devonham, but please go ahead. You're speaking.
My microphone's not good. But no, I'm I'm just a little bit worried once again that the council tax is being loaded. The government themselves is saying, you know, there's been a big increase in real terms. They're talking in terms of four and a half percent. And it seems to me that most of the increases are not coming from the government, but they're coming from council taxpayers, they're having to pay another five percent. And as you all know, the council tax is a very regressive tax regarding ability to pay. And therefore, something that's being boasted from the government as being excellent government is in fact not so. And that's what my questions are about, really. Hello?
Alan, I I heard that. Have you finished? Because you do have three minutes and you've got two minutes still to go.
Okay, we'd just like to respond to the questions that were accepted by the council.
Certainly. In which case, I'll call upon councillor John Woodman to reply, please. Can I ask other councillors who are appearing on screen to, please mute your cameras?
I don't believe it's me, Chairman.
No, it's not. It's a lady councillor.
It's Mandy Chilcutt responding, Chair.
You're, well, sorry, I've got you down here as John, but councillor councillor Chilcutt, please go ahead. Apologies, John.
Thank you, and I'm glad you were able to get into the the call, Alan. So thank you for your questions, as ever thoughtful, but not strictly accurate. I have got an echo here at the moment. Are we all hearing that?
Yeah, it's okay.
I will carry on. So in his first question, as published, you ask, in effect, why residents should pay an increased council tax for fewer services. I would point him to look at the actual budget, which has significant investment in the key services closest to his heart, adult social care and children's services. We propose a budget that will increase spending in our adult social care budgets by more than £10 million. That is an increase, not a decrease. For children's, an increase of £9 million. For infrastructure and economic and community infrastructure teams, an increase. In fact, the only area that will be reduced, Alan, is our back office service. I hope that you would agree that we've got the emphasis right in this case, providing more funding for our adults and children's services and to improve lives in Somerset and providing less funding for back office provision. Your second point is about the historic debt that we as an administration inherited. I have no doubt that at the time, the ruling party of the day made decisions that they believed were valid and good value at that time. It has, of course, not stood the test of time, and this administration has had to deal with the level of debt repayment. There's nothing we can do as this borrowing is locked in for a generation to come, with considerable financial penalties with an early repayment. By way of example, to repay the £159 million of debt would cost more than an extra £125 million in penalties. Your final point is about the climate emergency strategy. I'm pleased that our budget for next year shows considerable investment in this area, but you are right to point out that we need to do far more. That is why the ongoing unitary debate is of such importance to Somerset. With a single powerful voice for Somerset, with one unitary council to speak for the population, we will be able to lobby and fight for more funding for our county and in particular, our big ambitions for climate change. We will work hard to ensure the government consultation is successful and that they reach what this council believes is the right decision for us all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Chilcutt, and I'm sorry to have muddled you up with who was due to speak. I'm afraid my papers had got shuffled. Lucy Travis now, and Lucy is going to speak on buses. Lucy Travis now, Lucy is going to speak on buses in Somerset and the reply will be by councillor John Woodman. Lucy Travis please. Lucy Travis, are you there please Lucy? Yeah, I think we will. Okay, I'm going to move then in that case to David Redwell. David, are you there?
Thank you Chairman, yes I am. My questions are on public transport. My first question really is around looking at whether or not the county can work with the adjacent authorities in Devon and Wecker to see whether or not it's possible to roll out a real time information system on bus stops on key routes, not on the deep rural ones, but on the main corridors such as the Bristol to Wells Glastonbury and Street or the Bristol to, sorry, the, let's say the Taunton to Burnham on Sea via Harbington Bridgewater or Taunton to Wellington, the key corridors really. And my second point is about the bus operator grant. At the moment, that is funded by the Department for Transport at twenty seven point five million pounds a week in England and we're now going to go into bus operator recovery grant, which is the next phase of the government involvement in funding the bus network. I'm wondering just whether the county council as part of that partnership will take control of the money and then allocate that to the appropriate bus operators in the county to make sure we get best value for money and quality of service. My second point is about Taunton, we've still got problems with social distancing and bus stops that are designed for popper buses and not for long distance country buses or coaches. We've seen various visions from Somerset West and Taunton council. I won't say I like the designs of the so blocks and offices and buildings they wish to provide, but that's for their, that's for the planning committee. But I am concerned if they're going to do a vision exercise that really they vision also on public transport and that's a county council function as transportation high authority and therefore that's the county council work with SWAT to see if we can make sure that we get better than just pictures of green electric buses in their pictures, we actually get some bus infrastructure in the town centre in the kind of way they've done in Exeter or Gloucester or Cheltenham or other, or Swindon where they've just got twenty five million pounds of taxpayers' money grant from Department for Transport for a similar vision exercise and to make sure they got a bus boulevard inside their Fleming Way. So I just really want to see the county join with SWAT, I'm not going to comment on the unitary authority, I think I'm from strong views and one authority, but just to make sure we get joined up government in Taunton to make sure we do get quality public transport in the designs and it's not left simply to the fact we don't actually get decent waiting shelters and provision within county town. And there is public money available from the Department for Transport, Grant Shapps, if we bid for it, I'll check that through. The second, the third issue really is about the vaccination centres and just to say that I'm very pleased with the vaccination bus service and thank you to the Chair and also councillors for the one that's running between Wells and Shepton Mallot and Showground, that's excellent and the work's been done to getting buses to vaccination centres across the county. I'm extremely disappointed that despite best best endeavours by a number of people in this room and people involved in bus and health lobbying, say that we've still got no public transport to the Taunton Racecourse Centre apart from a ninety nine bus and a long walk for eighty, ninety and seventy year olds and now disabled people down a country lane off bus route ninety nine. We've raised with the clinical commissioning group, they've been written to by Baroness Veer, the transport minister, they've also been written to by Grant Shapps, to all clinical commissioning groups and transport operators to put public transport onto these sites is very, very important for older people who don't have access.
I'm sorry to interrupt, can you draw it to close because you only have three minutes?
I just really would like to see Chairman an answer really from the clinical commissioning group, find a way forward on making sure that people can get to the racecourse for very vital vaccinations for Covid nineteen. Thank you Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you David Redwell and councillor John Woodman, you will respond please.
Thank you very much David, good to see you. Regarding your first question around real time information, we have no plans at present to provide real information, real time information on screens. However, we will continue to work with our partners at the National Transport Information, that's Travelline as you know, on providing real time information on mobile phones. We continue to receive the Covid nineteen funding from central government to support bus services and to provide additional capacity on service into schools and further education colleges from the Department for Transport and the Department for Education. And we are currently awaiting further information from central government in relation to this ongoing recovery funding. We have no plans to reduce Somerset County Council's budgets for the funding of bus services in twenty one, twenty ten, two in that financial year. Now, on your second question regarding the bus facilities in Taunton, we are continuing to work with South West and Taunton council on the provision of suitable facilities in Taunton Town Centre following the closure of the bus station. We have already responded to the government's consultation on that rural transport consultation. And on your third question, the third question improving bus links, I can confirm that we are currently working with the NHS to provide a better service link between those two sites David. Thank you very much and it's really good to see you.
Thank you, thank you Chairman, thank you John.
Thank you both of you. I'm now going to ask Scott Woodridge to read out the questions by Lucy Travis unless Lucy has turned up. Lucy, are you there? One last chance? No, I'm going to ask our monitoring officer if he would be kind enough to read out Lucy's words, buses on Somerset.
Thank you Chair, and Lucy Travis asks three questions of the cabinet member. First question is firstly in Froome, we still need a regular Covid nineteen cleaning programme for all bus shelters. We need a bus shelter outside the Froome Hospital in Froome Fields and one at Froome Railway Station, approach for bus fifty three and one at Froome Cork Street coach station. Will the county council work with Wiltshire County Council to improve bus services to Froome Station? Question two is also set out on the published schedule, essentially it says on shelter maintenance that she is very concerned that as a wheelchair user, she cannot get off the bus at Walton due to the shelter being closed down, that it has barriers around it. The shelter of course needs to maintain Covid nineteen secure cleaning standards and social distancing with social distancing notices. Will the council help ensure the barriers and railings at Wells Bus Station are repaired and can we please have this shelter at Walton repaired? And the final question is, it is important with reductions in bus services from Mendip Towns to Bath Spa Bus and Coach Station, from Froome, Shepton Mallot and the city of Wells Bus Station and from Street Glastonbury Wells Bus Station to Bristol Temple Meads and Bristol Bus Station, it is important that clear timetable information should be provided for passengers by the Wecker Mayoral Transport Authority, North Somerset Council and Somerset County Council about services operating within Mendip District. Will the county council commit in the longer term to update bus timetables on all bus stops in the Mendip District council area bus stations and interchanges and railway stations at Castle Carey and Froome? And there's the three questions Chair for councillor John Woodman to respond to.
Thank you monitoring officer, councillor John Woodman please, will you respond?
Certainly, and but thank you Lucy for those questions and thanks to the monitoring officer for reading them out. We had three questions and I'll take them one at a time if I may. Regarding the maintenance and cleaning of bus shelters, this is not a responsibility of Somerset County Council. Bus shelters in Somerset are owned by either the district, the town or the parish councils who are responsible for these matters. And with regards to new bus shelters, we currently have no funding available for those facilities. Somerset County Council already provide joint funding along with Wiltshire Council to support services that serve Froome Railway Station and currently have no plans to improve those services, but we will be, continue to work with Wiltshire Council to make sure we support the existing service levels. With your second question, with regards, I can confirm that the bus shelter at Walton and Wells Bus Station are both owned and maintained by Mendip District Council and I'll raise and highlight that to Mendip District Council on your behalf. And question three regarding your question about timetabling, First West of England update their timetable information in the Mendip area and Somerset County Council and Somerset County Council ensure that timetable information is correct. We will contact First West of England to check that they have updated their bus stop timetables and we'll also carry out spot checks in that area. Thank you very much Lucy for those questions.
T Harris, I believe the screen's showing that you've now arrived, did you hear the Lucy, are you with us? No, I was told you were here, but I'm sorry you're obviously not hearing us, but I hope councillor Woodman's replies have satisfied your, given you satisfactory answers to your questions. Okay, I'm going to leave to our last public question, that is John Hassell, Mr John Hassell speaking of rail future in Sevenside. He has a couple of questions, Mr Hassell. I cannot hear him, I don't know whether comms can advise please? Okay, I'm going to do the same now and I will read the questions, Mr Hassell's questions in his absence. Question one is on railways. He says, we welcome the return of trains over Christmas and hopefully again in the, in Somerset, in the summer, sorry, in the summer, and the investment in the study for a Langport and Somerton Parkway Station and progress on Wellington Railway Station and the need also to look at opening Char Junction Station, the regeneration of Taunton Railway Station with a public transport interchange and the need to get train service operating on the West Somerset Railway from Taunton Bishop Lydia to Willetton, Watchit and Minehead with both steam leisure services and through passenger services to the main line. By, and there's some initials, DMU service by First Great Western Railway, is the county council able to support go co-op rail proposals for an instant open access service from Swindon to Taunton and Bishop's Lydia? Question two, has the county council raised with the Department for Transport the loss of train catering services on the first MTR South Western Railway service from Exeter St David and Central to London Waterloo? During the Covid nineteen emergency timetables, it is very important that the Department for Transport, First Group Great Western Railway and South Western Railway have an emergency recovery plan to maintain connectivity across Somerset to the west country and connections elsewhere in the country for essential journeys. I'm going to ask councillor John Woodman to respond. Councillor Woodman?
Thank you very much Chair for reading those out and thank you to John for his questions as well. The first question, the county council is aware of those go up proposals, has met with them on a number of occasions to discuss and progress their plans. We welcome the additional services and the connectivity across Somerset that they might provide. We will work, we will continue to work with them and with other stakeholders in the rail industry. We will also continue to support the various station reopening projects referred to in your question. Onto question two, we have not raised a matter of onboard catering with the DFT. We are aware that SWT has suspended all onboard food and drink services and that the contract with the supplier has been formally cancelled. This was in part to maintain social distancing regulation during the ongoing Covid virus measures, but also because it was heavily loss making. The DFT was involved in that decision within the current emergency recovery measures agreement. The train operator is currently going through a direct award negotiation with a view to the franchise commencing in April. The consideration of whether onboard catering will return will be an important factor within a tight cost envelope. If the outcome is not positive, there are a range of alternatives that we will discuss with the train operator, including provision of extra services at stations. Additionally, the county councils continue to work in close collaboration with all the train operating companies and with Network Rail to ensure the best level of rail connectivity and support connectivity growth for Somerset, both during the current situation and as we move forward into the recovery phase. Equally know that customer experience and the service they receive onboard our trains is as important to them as having good connectivity and journey times. And we will continue to make this point with the rail operating companies and also with Network Rail as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Woodman and that concludes the public question times. I'm now moving on to item five, that is the Chair's announcements. And before I start, there are two items that I wish to raise. The first one is I wish to make a very sincere public apology for the inappropriate comments made at the end of the last council meeting and for any concerns these may have caused any members of the public and councillors, particularly those members of the gypsy and travellers communities. And I fully apologise for that error. Item two, I wish to make you all aware that just before that meeting, I was diagnosed with cancer and I want you to be aware that it has now progressed to stage four and as such, I will be considering taking temporary leave of absence after this meeting. I was determined that I would come to this meeting today to make my apology and I just ask you to understand that. Thank you. I'm going to move now to the other announcements which you'll find.
Chairman, can I just interrupt for a moment?
Mr Fothergill?
Could I, first of all, thank you for your apology, I think that I've talked with you in your face and said, I understand the personal challenges that you're going through at the moment Chairman and I'd just like to give you my every best wish and I'm sure every person on this council would want to support you through this very difficult time for you and you have our support and we will, if there's anything we can do for you through the coming months, you must shout out, we need to come together to give you the best support we possibly can.
Thank you councillor Fothergill, that is exceedingly kind of you and members, thank you. The other Chair's announcements you will find on page nine, they cover information regarding the visits made between the eighteenth of November twenty twenty and the sixteenth of February twenty one. Sadly, you'll see there are very few and owing to the Covid situation, but I seem to have done a lot of corresponding and phone calls and when the pandemic is over, when I feel better, let's hope we can get out there and do what we can to help people. I also wished to ask you, the council, to pay your respects for those in Somerset, for the residents that have lost a tragic number of their family and relatives and friends. And I will be asking shortly for a minute's silence for them in their memory. I also wish to note the recent passing of John Brunson, Member of the British Empire, former county councillor for Glastonbury, he also served as a district councillor, mayor of Glastonbury and as Glastonbury Town councillor for forty four continuous years. I'm going to ask now for a one minute's silence please. I'm going to ask now for a one minute's silence, please. Thanks. That concludes our one minute silence. Councillor Napper, I'm afraid we didn't hear any of that and we were holding a one minute silence then. Can you mute your, your screen please Terry?
Very sorry chairman, can you hear me now?
Yeah, can you mute your screen Terry? We, I've been told that we should be moving on now in business. Thank you. We are now going to move to item six, which is the report of the leader and cabinet for decisions. You'll find this on pages 11 to 172 of your documents. We will be considering a report with recommendations from the leader of council, rising from the cabinet meeting held on the 8th of February 2021. The recommendations will relate to the medium term financial plan 2021 stroke 2022, budget and council tax sending, paper A, and the treasury management strategy 2021, 22, paper B. So I'm now going to call upon councillor, sorry, Scott Woodridge, the monitoring officer who will now speak.
Apologies Chair, just before the, the leader of council introduces this report. I just wanted to remind all members present, you, you will already know this, it's published in the chair's schedule. But it's incumbent upon me just to remind you that I've granted a dispensation that allows all elected members to both participate and vote on setting the annual budget, council tax levels and the members allowances scheme later in the, the agenda. But secondly, just a reminder that should any member who has an amount of council tax due to be paid, which has not been paid for at least two months, they need to declare that at this point because they cannot take part in the vote relating to setting a revenue budget. That's just a reminder for all elected members. Now that, that point, I'll, I'll obviously just hand over now Chair to the leader of the council.
Councillor Father Gill, you have the floor sir.
Thank you monitoring officer and thank you chairman. Well, what a year that's passed and what a year lies ahead, I suppose. We've been through extraordinary and very, very difficult times for the last 12 months. This meeting began with that minute silence and I just want to reflect once more and thank everyone here for paying their respect to those that have lost their lives with COVID-19 over the past 12 months. The sad roll call in Somerset is 682 individuals. And I'm sure that number will increase over the next few months as well. And they've died and sadly died with COVID-19. And I hope that all families and friends will take some comfort from the fact that so many people around our great county are thinking of them at this time. So this meeting's purpose is to look ahead and the next 12 months and ultimately approve our spending plans for the next year that gives some ideas to our residents and our communities of our vision and priorities. But it's impossible to do that without looking back at the year past and reflect on this council's contribution to the pandemic and its impacts. I know I speak for the whole council when I thank our staff and our leadership team for their enormous efforts over the year. Efforts that even now continue and will continue for many, many months to come. I was particularly proud when so many of us, so many councillors came together to say thank you to our wonderful staff in a very short video last year. And I know just how well received it was. So thank you to all of you for taking part and saying that thank you in a very special way. This time last year coronavirus was featured in the news and starting to raise concerns. But our public health team had already activated their own emergency standing and had started to prepare for what they knew was to come. Many of us had no idea. But it was the first sign and actually I believe it was one of the first actions by any council in the country of what was to come. That foresight and early preparation had a significant impact upon the council and helped us all take the first steps to prepare before the virus hit this county so very hard. Our public health teams, early actions enabled the council to activate a program to purchase personal protective equipment in large numbers. Our procurement team eventually purchased more than 11 million pieces of PPE from sources around the country and indeed around the globe. Somerset was able to provide PPE to care homes, to schools, to support the NHS, to equip our own staff and of course to help our key partners. There were many recommendations from council members across this council of how to help source this PPA. And I would like to thank each and every one of you that put forward an idea and offered to help. Of course, the depth of the impact of the virus meant that there were times when stocks ran low or ran out. But on the whole, our PPE provision was undoubted success during a national shortage. And there is no doubt, no doubt at all that this means lives were saved in Somerset as a result. As the virus took hold, our normal activity reduced and new ways of working began. On Friday, the 20th of March, many of us were working from county hall from the office. On Monday, the 23rd of March, the first national lockdown meant we were all working from home. Our IT team have performed, performed a superb job to enable this to happen. The entire workforce of staff or councillors all working from home due to an IT approach that enabled flexible working. That is truly outstanding. We then needed to look after people who were shielding, were vulnerable and needed help and support. Within days, I paid tribute to my district council colleagues too. We had created a single contact centre for Somerset residents that is still operating as we speak. A huge challenge to link up five councils, five contact centres, five sets of technology and turn it into a single number that Somerset needed. Some facts show just the importance of this achievement. 10,000 people have been directly supported through the helpline. 120,000 letters and 10,000 emails sent to check on our vulnerable people that they were doing okay. 180,000 food packages delivered by our absolutely amazing village agents and our community groups across the county. 22,000 meals were prepared by Somerset School caterers to give to those in need. 11,000 children and their families received food support over half term and Christmas holidays. And I can promise that there is more on that to come in a few minutes. On top of all this, we provided significant and really crucial help to our care providers when they needed it most. 15 million pound already invested and that will continue to increase in this most vital of our sectors. And our staff continued to step up. I thank all the hundreds of staff who offered to get involved or even to be deployed, redeployed and 400 or so who actually did so. Working in a totally different role to provide help and support. A huge response and many from the economic and community infrastructure teams. So I asked director Paula Hewitt to pass on our thanks to them all. And through to all our schools and our teachers who have worked for so long, initially to support key workers, then to teach online and in school, and now again in lockdown supporting key workers. Alongside them at all times are children's director Julie Worcester, who has worked tirelessly to support the sector. We are waiting for an announcement about how their own work will change again. But let me be clear, our teachers and our school staff are absolute heroes and perhaps not gaining the true credit that they deserve. These numbers show how Somerset has pulled together councils, communities, voluntary groups and how important that coming together has proved to be. And now many of us of a certain age are either ready to receive or maybe wasting a few more weeks to receive their vaccine vaccinations or perhaps you've already received yours. We all look forward with hope. That vaccination programme is showing Somerset has achieved the government's first priority targets and we have moved to over 65s and then all over 50s in the programme. Once I thank all, all our colleagues from GPs to hospital staff, including partners in the clinical commission group which is running the programme. I also want to acknowledge the support and very real assistance this council is providing. Assistance that the NHS has told me was vital to achieve these first targets. Commonly said is a comment, we could not have done it without you. Again, my enormous gratitude to our staff and all they have done. There are so many areas and so many individuals to thank, it is frankly an impossible job. So on behalf of the council, I would like to all staff thanking them for their work. But I do need, and I think it's appropriate to mention a few, just a handful of people who provided the leadership and dedication that served Somerset so well. Pat Flarty, our chief executive for enabling the council to continue to respond so magnificently. Trudy Grant, our director of public health for providing the foresight, the knowledge, the leadership that has proved so essential. And of course her teams with Cheryl Vidal and Catherine Faulkner leading outbreak management. To Dave Parklow, a key manager in our adult services and the largely unseen presence who has managed to link PPE, care homes and now vaccinations to the people who need it most. And of course to Mel Rock, our director of adult services and the team who have carried out the burden of, the burden on the sector which has been seeing such awful consequences. Simon Clifford for his calm but essential leadership in communications, community support and vaccinations. Alan Jones, who has just been tremendous in running the support for vulnerable people through the cell has been established that has helped so many throughout this crisis. And for Heidi Boyle for keeping our workplaces safe. Jan Stafford and Pip Cannons, outstanding managers who joined some stint in work, set up the contact centre helpline and continued to provide extraordinary support behind the scenes. Our project managers, managers who have been on location setting up the vaccination sites. Sadly, too many to mention by name, but the NHS are hugely appreciative of their work. Chris Squire, our HR director and Michelle Cusack for their workforce leadership. Scott Waldridge, who does so much to help all of us to be effective and to properly represent our residents. There are of course many, many more who have gone above and beyond the call of duty. And I've just named but a handful, there is always the risk that I will miss others out as I'm sure I have. But we are grateful to them all. I've seen firsthand what a difference they are making. It's also right indeed essential, we fully reflect our thanks for all our partners and providers in the care sector. Our adult social care staff have been magnificent in the way they have supported the sector, supported our providers, supported families and individuals throughout this crisis. Working with our health colleagues in care homes, in people's homes and all the time working with our superb care providers of all shapes and sizes. It has been such a tough time for them all. Just last week, we commissioned a moving and powerful film showcasing the level of devotion and dedication our care homes have provided to those they call their families in the battle against this terrible virus. The emotion and exhaustion of the sector was laid bare in that film. And I am so glad it has been so widely picked up and shared by the traditional media and social media. It's a real insight into how tough it has been for the care sector. So I thank Sandra Joyce and all herself at Linden House in Wellington for having the courage to open up her care home for our cameras. And I believe all of Somerset owes a massive debt of gratitude. And to all our care homes across the county, all our care staff, our micro providers in our wider community. What they have done has been truly, truly remarkable. Chair, at the risk of causing complete chaos now, I just wondered if, if members, we've, we've got used to our Thursday evening claps at eight o'clock. Shall we just take a few minutes to, a few seconds just to clap and applaud our own staff for everything that they have done? Our staff, our colleagues, our partners and our voluntary groups who have done so much for Somerset. Perhaps now we can just even open our microphones and give a few seconds of applause for so many that have done so. All councillors for that, it is truly humbling to lead a council in these times. I just apologise and didn't give you enough time to go and get the wooden spoons and the pots and pans to bang at the same time. So as I prepared this speech, I felt there was more than I wanted to do to recognise the extraordinary dedication and effort that individuals, individuals and communities have shown to support their neighbours, their residents, those in need and those who are struggling. So I'd like this council to consider creating the unique emblem of our thanks, a Somerset medal. I'll ask the chairman to develop a symbol of recognition that will, that will work for young and old across our county and give some visible sign of the gratitude we have for those who have contributed so much in our towns, in our parishes and in our communities. I hope all council will support this work and find a collective approach as a sign of recognition for those that have done so much over the past year and the coming weeks. And so to the year ahead, although we are in turbulent times, we are here to present a budget for the coming financial year ahead. And I'd like to highlight a few areas to demonstrate our priorities away from the continuing support we offer to combat COVID and its impacts. First, my thanks of course must go to our finance team, to director Jason Vaughan and all his managers at the council. We read so often about councils up and down the country having very real financial struggles. And I'm delighted to put forward such a progressive budget at this time. Our priority is clear and laid bare in the financial papers in front of you. It is a budget dominated by investment. We are investing in our vital adult services, 10 million pound extra investment in our budgets to help those most vulnerable people. A further 9 million extra invested in our children's services. My dearest wish is that we finally get an inspection visit from Ofsted just to showcase the huge improvements that have been made in our safeguarding services. A further 6.5 million on climate change projects, 130 million invested in major infrastructure schemes with 74 million on new schemes approved. A new digital innovation centre and the townway junction improvements for just two of the larger schemes. Investment in specialist education in West Somerset area over the next two years. A significant expansion of more of our schools. And of course, the innovative scheme to provide residential placements in children's and adult services. Now, I won't go any further at this time as I'm sure the cabinet member, Manley Chilcutt, will want to dwell on some of this. But I would like to make one thing clear. I mentioned this council has already provided free school meals to thousands of families through half term and Christmas. And we went further and supplemented government vouchers and food parcels with an extra three pound time to help families improve on the quality of the food available. I can assure council today that during this current half term, we are currently doing the same. More support for more children and families. The upcoming Easter holidays and this year's summer holidays, more support for more children and families. I'm proud to say that we are setting aside several hundreds of thousands of pounds of additional funding to provide more support for those families throughout the upcoming holiday periods. Now during this time of crisis nationally, a time of financial stress for many councils, it is just so impossible to be able to put forward a progressive budget and invest in our adults and our children's services. A budget investing in climate change and infrastructure, a budget that invests in our residents, our businesses and our communities. And above all, a budget that invests in providing more support for all families. It is something I am absolutely delighted to be able to endorse and I invite all council members to support it. It'd be wonderful if our residents could see politicians of all parties and all colours coming together at this time as one to agree a budget that can do so much good for our county and our people. Now my final comment is about the imminent government consultation that could lead to local government reform. You will know this is adopted council policy and you will know of my personal preference for single unitary council for Somerset. The idea of splitting Somerset into two or three or perhaps even five, which is what strongly Somerset proposes is something I just cannot understand. It would mean any response to the crisis would have been weaker, slower and less effective. I honestly believe the strength of One Somerset Working has been shown throughout this crisis, coming together as one for the good of our residents, saving lives, looking out for each other, showing courage, compassion and caring. That is what Somerset is all about. Somerset has pulled together in hardship and great need. It is a place I am so very proud of to represent through this council. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Fothergill, a very touching speech, and I would fully endorse your idea of a Somerset Medal. I think that would be a fitting consideration for the people of Somerset, many who have worked so, so hard. Before I move to the medium term financial plan, I'm going to propose that each paper is presented, debated and voted upon separately. So I'm now going to invite councillor Chilcutt to refer to the report set out in paper A, pages eleven to one hundred and seventy two, considered at the three scrutiny committees and the cabinet meeting in January and February, setting out revenue budget, the capital strategy, the minimum revenue provision statement and section twenty five statement from the section one five one officer for approval at the county council meeting of February twenty twenty. Councillor Chilcutt will highlight that members will need to have due regard to the equalities impact assessments within these papers. Councillor Chilcutt.
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to introduce paper A and the reports today, the medium term financial plan for twenty one twenty two budget and council tax setting. This report follows on from the updates to cabinet in January and February and all three scrutiny committees. I would also like to remind members that in making decisions today, they need to give due regard to the equalities impact assessments in appendix two two. The paper gives a full picture of the revenue budget, capital programme, capital strategy and the minimum revenue provision statement and the section twenty five statement from the one five one officer. The paper sets out the spending plans for the next three years, including a balanced budget for the coming financial year that invests in Somerset. It's fair to say that the whole budget process has been hampered by the many impacts of Covid nineteen that has made this estimating service costs more difficult. For many of our demand led services, separating and establishing what is the new normal base level of service from specific Covid nineteen related activity is very difficult, particularly when trying to forecast and project this over the longer term. Much work and challenge of the budget has been undertaken within the adults and children's teams, and as a result, the children's and adult services budget will see a substantial increase of over nineteen million pounds. This is needed to meet rising ongoing demands. So that's an increase in the adults budget of ten point one seven more, four million, and an increase in the children's budget of eight point nine seven six million. This budget increase will help support and protect those that need it most. It will see an increase in council tax of one point nine nine percent, as well as a preset of three percent for adult social care. The budget also outlines a capital programme that will see increased spending in infrastructure projects, including major investment in schools, enterprise centres and roads. Almost a hundred and thirty million pounds will be allocated to major schemes with over seventy three million pounds of new projects approved. This includes spending over six million pounds helping to address the climate change emergency. The financial resilience of this council remains strong, with over ninety million pounds in reserves. This is a hugely improved position when compared to just a few years ago. The budget before you invest in Somerset, its businesses and its communities, and focuses on Somerset County Council's corporate priorities, improving lives, protecting frontline services and making continued improvements to our financial management. Following the leader, I also have to give huge thanks to Jason and the finance team. Working remotely has without doubt had its challenges. In the preparation of the budget, the finance team has worked tirelessly and received the cooperation and support of every director and cabinet member, strengthened with the challenge from the scrutiny committees. All have played a part in helping to face the challenge needed to bring forward this robust budget in what are unprecedented and truly exceptional times. Recognising that, I would like at this point to propose an amendment to the recommendations. The amendment is to provide a grant of up to four hundred thousand pounds to the Citizens' Advice across Somerset and for this to be financed from Covid funding. During the Covid nineteen pandemic, Citizens Advice have moved to a new model of working whereby the free phone advice line has become the primary channel for residents to access advice and guidance as face to face contact has understandably almost stopped. The individual Citizens Advice organisation have worked together across the county with modest funding from the National Lottery and Somerset Community Foundation to create a pilot project to recruit, train and supervise volunteers. Using new telephony arrangements, callers to Somerset Advice line are routed to available volunteers, reducing the gap between demand and provision. Citizens Advice Somerset are reporting that they expect demand for their services to rise exponentially over the next year, particularly as furlough ends and evictions recommence. This budget amendment is for a grant of up to four hundred thousand to be made available to support the fantastic work that the Citizens Advice undertake across the county. It will include funding the development of a countywide service that can be an exemplar for the whole country to help close the gap between demand and provision, to extend opening hours and to develop capacity for the inevitable increase in demand. This grant would enable Citizens Advice to fully transform business model, bringing together increased numbers of volunteers with skilled and experienced professionals to provide essential services and help support our residents often when they need it most. I'm therefore pleased to propose and invite councillor Liz Lation to second the amendment to provide a grant of up to four hundred thousand pounds to Citizens Advice Somerset as follows. Recommendation M. Approve a grant of up to four hundred thousand pounds to Citizens Advice Somerset, finance from Covid funding with the allocation decisions delegated to the section one five one officer in consultation with a cabinet member for resources based upon a suitable business plans. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Chilcutt. I'm going to ask councillor Liz Lation if she'd like to make comment.
Thank you, Chair, very much. I am indeed delighted to second this amendment. I would like to reserve my right to speak, and I would ask you, may I also reserve my right to speak further on the MTFP paper A? Thank you.
Both requests are obviously noted, thank you. Any other member questions, please? Any member questions? Councillor Hazel Prior-Sankey.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question generally on the adults budget. One point is around the extra paper that came to cabinet that is in the papers around the employment support for discovery, just to say that this hasn't been through scrutiny. And whilst I understand that it is something that needs to be looked at, I think that, you know, we need to be participating in further discussions on the way forward.
Hazel, sorry to interrupt you, but these should be questions on the amendment.
Sorry, well, I fully support the amendment, but I'll come in later on that then, thank you.
Thank you councillor, thank you very much indeed. Any, excuse me, any other councillors with any questions on the amendment? Councillor David Fothergill, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Chair, it's not a question, it's a statement really. Many of you will know that my wife worked for many years for the Citizens Advice. I would like to say that she retired from Citizens Advice within Somerset five years ago, so I don't have any interest to declare, but I would like to make it very clear on record that I have no involvement that I need to declare.
Councillor Fothergill, thank you, that is noted, thank you. Any other councillors with any questions on the amendments, please?
Chairman, I apologise, it's councillor Jane Locke. I don't appear to be able to put my hand up at the moment.
Go ahead please councillor, go ahead councillor Locke.
Thank you. Chairman, I just wanted to thank both Liz and Mandy for the work that they have put into preparing this amendment for the budget. I know that it will be much appreciated, not just by Citizens Advice, but by the people who depend on their very good advice. And as Somerset begins to recover from this dreadful nightmare of the pandemic, I'm sure it will be well used and very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Locke. Any other, any other councillors?
Councillor John Hunt, I do have my hand up, but perhaps you can't be seen very well.
I can't see you, John, but go ahead. And then I see councillor Dean Ruddle, so it's John Locke first, followed by Dean Ruddle, please.
Do you mean John Hunt? Sorry, Chair.
My apologies councillor, John Hunt first and then councillor Dean Ruddle second, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yes, just on the amendment, I would just like to say this is clearly fantastic news for everyone in the Citizens Advice Bureau and will make a huge difference, certainly here in Taunton, I can only speak for Taunton, but I know how much difference this funding will make to Chief Officer John Schusmith and his dedicated team at Citizens Advice in Taunton. I remember being at the AGM, which was, thinking back, it was a meeting we could actually physically go to, which was lovely at the time. But the funding reduction in early two thousand and nineteen did necessitate in some drop in services which they had to make at the time, and I know how much difference this will make now. I would also, obviously I will support this, I also would ask that consideration is made for forthcoming years of this council or indeed the Unitary Authority, I appreciate we can't speak on behalf of that authority should it come into force, but I do think it could be something or should be something that should be considered in the making of that authority when it comes up. But absolutely full support and well done for bringing this forward, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hunt, councillor Dean Ruddle, please.
Thank you, Chair, I'd like to thank Liz for all her hard work and I'd like to thank Mandy for proposing this, I think it's a really good thing. And actually, when we had councillors' grants, I actually gave the local branch fifteen hundred pounds of my grant towards it, so I am in full support. So thank you guys for bringing it forward, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Ruddle, I don't see anybody else, if there is anybody else who wishes to speak, can you just indicate or call in please?
Yes, I have my hand up, it's Tessa Munt.
Councillor Munt, go ahead please.
Thank you. I wanted just to congratulate Liz, I know that this came out of presentation that Citizens' Advice did to Mendip District Council, and I know they've done the most amazing work across Somerset, I think they're brilliant, absolutely brilliant. So of course I shall be supporting this amendment. The other thing I'd like to do is, I don't want to leave something resting on the record, I'll refer to David Fothergill's comments when he suggested that Stronger Somerset had the proposed three or four or five forms of unitary. I'm not sure that's correct, he will correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was that Stronger Somerset presented an east and a west option, but if I'm wrong, I'm happy to be corrected, thank you very much.
Councillor Fothergill, you have the right to reply.
Thanks, Chair, and thank you, Tessa. I think you've probably read the business case, as I've read the business case, the proposal, as you will know, is for an east and a west unitary, a children's trust or similar vehicle, a shared services vehicle and a combined authority vehicle. So there are actually five organisations, I think, whether it's two, three, four or five, they will all need to form some form of unitary model across the county. So I think I'm accurate in my description of two, three, four or five.
Thank you councillor Fothergill. If there are no more questions, I can't see anybody, unless you can, if you can call in please, if we can't see your hand, we've scanned the screen and we don't, Tony Locke, councillor Tony Locke.
Yeah, thank you very much, but whether it's working or not.
It is intermittently, yes.
No, thank you. I would like to add my support to this amendment, I think it is one of the better things which this authority has done. It's sad though that we have to give a grant of four hundred thousand, though I am one hundred percent behind it of supporting the Citizens Advice to replace the funding which we, which was cut a few years ago. And I would just ask, like to ask councillor Chilcutt, it's, as it has been stated as a grant, are we looking as an authority to reinstate this into the revenue budgets so that the funding for the Citizens Advice goes up year on year in light of the cuts which this authority made to them? But very, very supportive of this and a very well deserved award, thank you.
Councillor Chilcutt, you have the right to reply.
Thank you, to be fairly clear today, as laid out in the amendment, this is a grant, a grant is a one off, and this is a one off because this is for a specific project that will help the resilience of the organisation right across Somerset.
Thank you councillor Chilcutt. There being no more questions and no more hands raised, I'm going to pass now to Scott Woodridge to ask him to run the vote, thank you.
Chair, may I have my reserved right to speak on this item, please?
Certainly can councillor Lation, please go ahead.
Chair, thank you, I am, as I said, delighted to second this amendment. I'd like to thank councillor Chilcutt, Mandy, also Jason Vaughan, our section one five one officer, and Scott Woodridge, our monitoring officer, for their work to bring forward this amendment. I think too, Chair, that I might ask the chair of place scrutiny if we could invite Citizens Advice at a later date to give an annual report to the county council scrutiny as they do at Mendip District Council and presumably other districts. Citizens Advice are for all residents, and I really believe that the county council should understand the work as well as district councillors do. So I'd just like to highlight some words that came to me from the chief executive of Mendip Citizens Advice, and he said, through the pandemic, we have found a new demographic of clients, more younger people and those in employment, reflecting a greater demand for advice on employment issues and universal credit claims. I think that brings it home to us that as well as those people the county council supports through social care, there will now be a greater need for advice, support and help for families and people of all ages following the pandemic. So as councillor Locke, as leader of the opposition, will be adding her thanks to those of the leader, we need to understand that our officers at the county and also at district and parish level will continue to support all residents, and we are not able to predict exactly where that need will come from. We are in uncertain times, and having Citizens Advice with their new business model, ready to help wherever they're needed, I think this is a tremendous step forward. I hope then, as we go through to the expected local government reform, though we still don't know, that Citizens Advice will be at that table, helping us to understand where we need to help residents. So, thank you, Chair, I would very much hope that following the named vote on the amendment, that I can also... that I can also reserve my right to speak on the MTFP more generally. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. There's no problems there. Thank you very much indeed. I'm going to pass now to Scott Woodridge, the monitoring officer.
Thank you, Chair. And again, I'm just going to act just for everybody's benefit. I shall be clearly just taking members through the named vote. And this is on the budget amendment, the amendment that's set out in both annex A. And that's also the amendment clearly that both councillor Chilcot has proposed at the meeting and that has been seconded by councillor Leishon. So at that point, hopefully, members will remember what's required here. So I will be reading out members' names in alphabetical order when I call your name. If you just indicate whether you are agreed or in favour, or whether you are against or reject, or whether you are abstaining in terms of the proposed amendment. Again, since this is a named vote, as required under any of the budget proposals, the voting will be recorded in the minutes. So at this point, I shall start the vote and I shall start with councillor Best.
For.
Councillor Bloomfield.
For.
Councillor Bowne. Councillor Clayton. For. Councillor Caswell.
For.
Councillor Chilcot.
For.
Councillor Clark. Councillor Coles.
For.
Councillor Dance.
For.
Councillor Dimmery.
For.
Councillor Filmer.
For.
Councillor Father Gill. Councillor Fraschini.
For.
Councillor Govea.
For.
Councillor Grosskopf.
For.
Councillor Hall.
For.
Councillor Ham. Councillor Healy.
For.
Councillor Hewitt Cooper.
For.
Councillor James Hunt.
For.
Councillor John Hunt.
For.
Councillor Huxtable.
For.
Councillor Kendall.
For.
Councillor Lawrence.
For.
Councillor Lewis.
For.
Councillor Leishon.
For.
Councillor Jane Locke.
For.
Councillor Tony Locke. Councillor Tony Locke.
You're muted.
Tony, you're muted.
You're muted, Tony.
I'll pause councillor Tony Locke.
You're muted.
You're muted still.
No, yes, you are.
I believe I believe you've said for councillor Locke.
Our interpreter was able to sign for, so I think that's what they were saying.
Yeah, for.
Councillor Lovridge.
For.
Councillor Munt.
For.
Councillor Napper.
For.
Councillor Nicholson.
For.
Councillor Noel.
For.
Councillor Oliver.
For.
Councillor Parham.
For.
Councillor Paul.
For.
Councillor Priya Sankey.
For.
Councillor Pullin.
For.
Councillor Purbrik.
She's unfortunately, she has absent monitoring officer. We should have registered her at the start of the meeting. I think she is poorly today.
Thank you, Leader, for confirming. Councillor Redman.
For.
Councillor Rebbens.
On four, thank you very much.
Councillor Rigby.
For.
Councillor Ruddle.
For.
Councillor Taylor.
For.
Councillor Thorne. I believe councillor Thorne has said in the chat that he votes for. Councillor Verdon.
For.
Councillor Vijay.
For.
Councillor Wallace.
For.
Councillor Weddercop.
For.
Councillor Josh Williams. Councillor Rod Williams.
For.
And finally councillor Woodman.
For.
Clearly, the the motion is carried in terms of votes. I believe it's been carried by 51 votes in favour, no votes against and no abstentions. So therefore, that amendment has been approved. That is a additional recommendation that gets added to the recommendations that are already set out in paper A. And as councillor Chilcot and councillor Leishon announced, that will become a new recommendation M for members to now consider as part of the further debate on paper A, Chair. But I believe you were just going to ask the section 151 officer.
Thank you. I'm going to invite the section 15 officer, Jason Vaughan, to set out any additional points that he may care to. Mr Jason Vaughan, please.
Good morning, Chairman. No, I do not have any additional points to raise on this. So I think the implication of recommendations are very clear.
Thank you, Jay. That's that's very good. Right, I'm going to ask any members now if they have any questions on the MTFP report. And the answers will be provided by councillor Chilcot or other cabinet members if regarding specific proposals in their areas of responsibility or the section 151 officer. Hazel Priya Sankey, I believe that you wish to say to speak.
Yes, sorry, I came in at the wrong moment before. Just on the adults' social care budget, we have a demographic additional demands increase. And I can't actually see the discovery bit mentioned in full in full council papers. But I know there was some discussion about additional money is going to discovery. And I think there is still angst about that in that they have, you know, why are we paying extra money to discovery when the number of clients that they are providing the service for has dropped dramatically? And the other point on the discovery issue is the extra paper, which is here in these papers, but was additional at Cabinet, which hasn't been through adults and health scrutiny, was the issue around the employment support for discovery. And I think that that is a discussion that needs to be had as consultations get further down the line. Because whilst I agree it's something that needs to be talked about, I do know how much the discovery work is valued by people with learning disabilities trying to disemployment. And whilst DWP is is obliged to provide that service, I think they only get 10 minutes per client per fortnight. And that probably isn't enough to deal with the complexities. And I know that they refer people through the discoveries contracts. So I think it's a discussion to be had. And I'm just a bit concerned that it kind of has bypassed scrutiny. At least I don't recall it being in the papers or talked about at scrutiny. And I think I would probably have remembered. But other than that, it's just those comments. And it's good to see that there is more money coming into adult social care and children's, which is a good thing. I just it's just those couple of points. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hazel Priya Sankey. I'm going to invite councillor David Huxtable to respond, after which I will turn to councillor Liz Leishon, who indicates she'd like to speak. So councillor Huxtable.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm I'm at something of a loss to understand why Hazel missed that at her scrutiny because it did come to her scrutiny committee. The increase in money going to discovery is contracted inflation and that is all. And there is in the papers and I will say it's on for for complete understanding. It's on my papers anyways, page 49. And it's our savings, adult savings, 2122 hyphen 07. If Hazel needs any more information on it, I'm very happy to provide it. But I'm sure the officers have provided enough for her and her scrutiny committee to understand it because at the scrutiny committee, there were actually no questions on this subject. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Huxtable. I'm going to turn to councillor Liz Leishon now, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. I would like to speak, please, if I may, as opposition spokesperson for resources on the MTFP paper A. It is a difficult place for Somerset, not only because of the pandemic, which is affecting every county, we know that, but because of the low council tax base and also the low income from council tax in Somerset. And I thank Jason Vaughan for his good work in explaining those situations. So I do understand that colleagues and residents will have concern about what is basically a 5% increase in council tax this year. We are still at a lower level on a band E house than most counties. So I think we have to bear that in mind. And as we move presumably into local government reform, that situation is there through our county and all our districts. And that is a challenge for whatever unitary may lie ahead, singular or plural. I understand the Covid emergency reserve of 10.8 million from the government money for next year. And I also understand the earmarked reserve, which can be seen on page 99, of 9.5 million, which was agreed by Cabinet last September, which is money that will help protect the county council against reductions in payments of council tax, possibly business rates too. We all understand through every district and county that it will be a challenging year like none other. And the years ahead, of course, are unknown to us at this stage. We can be sure, though, that upper tier authorities will see demand for services rise. And our officers, of course, are already working on that. The capital budgets in in this MTFP are very welcome in places. Those that can bring provision back into Somerset, particularly those that respond to the climate emergency. I'll refer you to the Glastonbury Town Fund investment plan, where there are some similar projects. And I hope very much that not only the Somerset projects go ahead, but that the Glastonbury projects do too. For clarity on borrowing, the cabinet member for resources referred to historic borrowing earlier in the meeting. I would just draw attention to table six on page 118. The council's likely borrowing requirement by the end of the financial year 2324 will be over half a billion pounds. That will include PFI, private finance initiative, which I believe is lower in Somerset than in other places. And I think we probably welcome that with the benefit of hindsight. So to sum up, Chair, there is a great deal of hard work demonstrated in this MTFP. I add my thanks to the finance team, to the portfolio holder and to all officers in the council who have worked unbelievably brilliantly in the most challenging of circumstances. And as I would do anywhere, I will say, never forget the IT team. They're your friends and we've never needed them more than we have in this year. So thank you very much, Chair.
Yep. Apologies, members, we've got a few technical details. We'll be with you in a second. Okay, I'll carry on then. If we carry on the meeting while we try and sort those issues out. I'll go back to Mandy Chilcot, if I could, please.
Thank you, Chair. I think that was a statement. I don't think there was a response needed.
Okay, and I can see David Father Gill's hand up.
Thanks, thanks very much, Peter, and thanks for stepping in. It was just to make very clear, I'm not sure I did in my in my opening speech. I'd just like to make it clear that it's me that's making the recommendations, that's putting this forward as proposer. I don't need to speak again, but I don't think I've actually gone on record as the proposer for this item.
Okay, thank you for that. And I've just, Mandy, have you still got your hand up, Mandy, from last time? Would you wish to speak again?
No, just to say, as they've now been proposed, I will, of course, second.
Excellent, thank you.
Chair, I'm trying to, and I can't raise my hand.
Is that councillor Locke?
No, it's Hazel Priya Sankey.
Oh, Hazel, Hazel then Dean, please.
Can I just come back on David Huxwell? I've looked back at the scrutiny papers and indeed that is rolled into a line on page 19 of the scrutiny papers. But there's such a short description of it. It was only when I looked at full council papers and I understood the the issues that were being outlined. And I think that demonstrates the paucity actually of the information available at scrutiny in that it didn't give us enough information to be able to realise what the employment support issue was about, really. So I think that's a kind of a heads up for further, you know, budget meetings where we do need sufficient detail at scrutiny to be able to properly scrutinise. And it was kind of just wrapped up in a in a table and didn't provoke the questioning that the full council papers have provoked in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Hazel. That's noted. Dean Ruddle.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'll just refer you to paper A, page 36, where we, in 2020, 22 to 23, we have a shortfall which had been been identified as 12.4 million, which is a significant amount of money. Looking at the savings we're doing at the moment, it looks like we're down to the bone on our savings, to be totally honest with you. And I'm just wondering how we're ever going to achieve a 12.4 million saving? And is that one of the reasons why we're pushing for unitary? That's just the first question. Secondly, if we go back to 118, page 118, which Liz alluded to on our, the extra borrowing we'll have by 24. It's assuming that no extra debt's been taken up yet. And it says 20210 and then 2022 90 90 million. I was led to believe that actually we have already got internal borrowings. Is that true or is that incorrect, please?
Okay, Mandy, do you want to take this or Jason? And I see can I can see David's got his hand up as well. So I'll start with Mandy. Do you want to take it?
I'll just pick up initially about the reserves, which I'm quite, oh, I'll just camera on as well, apologies, which I'm surprised surprised at the comment. Page 36, just below what was referred to by councillor Ruddle, says, with regard to the adequacy of general reserves, the level of 19.690 million is within the required range in addition to 71.474 earmarked reserves and levels of budget contingency. I'm sure the 1511 officer will be happy to confirm that they are at the levels they need to be at.
Thank you. Jason, do you want to come in there, please?
I wasn't talking, sorry, I wasn't talking about reserve, Chairman.
Okay. Jason, can you clarify?
Yep, happy to confirm that the reserves are an appropriate level, robust level. And I'm able to fulfil my statutory duties in terms of signing those off as being an appropriate level as part of the section 25 statement. And just picking up on the other question from councillor Ruddle. If he looks at page 117 of the report, it does actually set out what the internal borrowing level is. It's estimated to be 84.110 million pounds by the end of this financial year. So that is in the papers.
Thank you for that. David, do you still want to speak on that one?
I may, please. I'm very grateful for Dean Ruddle once again bringing up one Somerset. And I have my my business case here in front of me. And just to reassure Dean that the reasons we are looking for a single unitary authority are to give residents more sound local decisions, to develop better services, to develop better value for money for our taxpayers, to cut red tape and bureaucracy, to end confusion, which exists currently, to invest back into Somerset, reduce duplication and waste and create a strong strategic voice for the county. Actually, we didn't talk anywhere about balancing books. There are some really strong reasons why we need to do this. And one of them is not to balance our books, which are actually in a very good shape. And one of them is not to balance our books, which are actually in a very good shape.
Excellent. Thank you for those comments, leader. Um, I can't see any other hands up. Uh, can I remind members the recommendations of this budget are intended to be taken on block? And remind all members that there are, will be a named vote once again on the revenue budget as required by legislation. Um, no other comments from members then, so I'll move on to the monetary officer, who will read out the names once again.
Thank you again, members. Hopefully it should be, again, I will follow the same format as I did for the the budget amendments. Uh, clearly the recommendations, including that additional recommendation which you approved earlier, uh have already won a set out in paper A, including the addition just of that amendment. Um, again, I will be calling out names and these will be recorded as a name vote, again, as legally required. Uh, and again, if I could ask when I call your name, if you could just indicate if you're in favour for agreed uh or whether you are against, reject or don't agree, or alternatively whether you are abstaining. So at that point, I shall start with councillor Best.
For.
Councillor Bloomfield? Councillor Bloomfield? I shall move on. Uh, councillor Bowne?
For.
Councillor Clayton? Councillor Caswell?
For.
Councillor Chilcutt?
For.
Councillor Clark?
For.
Councillor Coles?
For.
Councillor Dance?
For.
Councillor Dimmery?
For.
Councillor Filmer?
For.
Councillor Fothergill?
For.
Councillor Fraschini?
For.
Councillor Gauvier?
Abstain.
Councillor Grosskopf?
For.
Councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Ham?
For.
Councillor Healy?
For.
Councillor Hewitt Cooper?
For.
Councillor James Hunt?
For.
Councillor John Hunt?
Abstain.
Councillor Huxtable?
For.
Councillor Kendall?
For.
Councillor Lawrence?
For.
Councillor Lewis?
For.
Councillor Leishon? Councillor Jane Locke?
For.
Councillor Tony Locke?
For.
Councillor Lovridge?
Abstain.
Councillor Munt?
For.
Councillor Napa?
For.
Councillor Nicholson?
For.
Councillor Knoll?
For.
Councillor Oliver?
For.
Councillor Parham?
For.
Councillor Paul?
For.
Councillor Prior Sankey?
For.
Councillor Pullin?
For.
Councillor Purbrik? Is is absent. Councillor Redman?
Abstain.
Councillor Revens?
Uh, four please.
Councillor Rigby?
For.
Councillor Ruddle?
For.
Councillor Taylor left the room, so I shall record him as absent for the vote. Councillor Thorne? I believe it's indicated in chat that he is voting for councillor Verdon?
For.
Councillor Vijay?
For.
Councillor Wallace?
For.
Councillor Weddercop?
For.
Councillor Josh Williams?
For.
Councillor Rod Williams?
For.
And finally councillor Woodman?
For.
If you just bear with me, I should just tally the votes that have been made. I should just report back to the meeting that in terms of votes cast, uh in terms of the recommendations, uh those recommendations have been agreed. They've been agreed on the basis of 45 votes for, zero against and four abstentions. And that therefore completes the voting on this item. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. If they will, then move on to the Treasury Management Strategy 2122 Paper B. And I will refer to councillor Chilcutt, Chilcutt, who will take out the report and Paper B, page 137 onwards, considered at the audit committee and the cabinet meetings in January and February. Councillor Chilcutt, please.
Thank you. I'll take Chilcop or Chiltop either. Thank you.
I'm new at this.
Thank you. Um, so just to introduce the Treasury Management Strategy Statement for 2122. So the Treasury Management is the management of the council's cash flows, borrowing and treasury investments and the associated risks. This paper has been considered at the Audit Committee and the Cabinet Meeting in January and February. Treasury Risk Management at the Council is conducted within the framework of the SIPF Treasury Management Code, which requires the council to approve a Treasury Management Strategy before the start of each financial year. This report fulfils the council's legal obligation under the Local Government Act 2003 to have regard to the SIPF Code. Under section three of the LGA 2003, duty to determine affordable borrowing limit, the local council must have regard to the SIPF Prudential Code. This code requires the setting of a number of prudential indicators, benchmarks within treasury and investment management and capital financing are managed. Looking very briefly at the borrowing strategy, members will see from the papers that this council currently holds 324.55 million pounds of debt as part of its strategy for funding previous year's capital programmes. The majority of the capital plan for 2122 are set out in the capital strategy that has just been approved as Paper A, is to be funded by grants and contributions. Whilst the finance, the capital financing requirement indicates that borrowing may need to be taken during 2122, a continuation of the passive borrowing strategy currently pursued is deemed to be most prudent. Moving to the investment strategy. Investment balances for 2021 to 31st of December 20 have ranged between 162 million to 278 million, averaging 232 million. These balances include just just under 68 million pounds of cash held on behalf of others. As always, the strategy will follow the MHCLG Statutory Guidance on Local Government Investments mantra of security, liquidity and yield. As of the 31st of December 2020, 25 million pounds of the 248 million pounds, that's 180 million pounds net of external bodies, was invested in pooled funds, 15 million in the CCLA Property Fund and 10 million Royal London Investment Grade Short-Dated Credit Fund. Treasury Strategy proposes to further diversify into more pooled funds during 2122. In conclusion, the recommendations are laid out in full in section 2.2 on page 15 of the papers. And I am happy to propose the recommendations. Just to point out before I read them out, that in the recommendations, there are uh there are shown some numbers, as in what section of the report they are in. Um, I'm assured it doesn't make any difference to, we won't need to amend. But just to say, in the first recommendation, section two of the report should read section 12 of the report. In the second recommendation, section three of the report should read 13. And also, uh, the section, the last one is section four of the report should read 14. So just to confirm the recommendations and to propose them, to adopt the the Treasury Borrowing Strategy as shown in section 12 of the report, to approve the Treasury Investment Strategy as shown in 13 of the report, and propose lending counterparty criteria attached as appendix B to the report. And finally, to adopt the Prudential Treasury Indicators in section 14 of the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And councillor Fothergill, you have to come in at this point.
I I think I'm just registering that I am seconding the vote, uh, Chairman. Um, and that I reserve my right to speak later.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Um, Jason Vaughan, section 15, obviously, uh, if you have any additional information you want to give us on this?
Yes, if I just could confirm that as part of the finance settlement in November, MHCLG imposed restrictions on a number of councils accessing PWLB loans uh because of their borrowing for yield policy. Uh, just to confirm that this council can still access PWLB loans. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think I'm okay to move on for questions from members. Uh, any questions, members? Councillor Lethal?
Thank you, um, Chair. It's not really a question.
You've gone on back onto mute, Liz, sorry.
Sorry, uh, I just wanted to thank the officers who work on Treasury Management. It's when I stood for election, if anybody told me that I would be reading and trying to understand these papers, I I wouldn't have known what they were talking about. And I'm sure most residents don't. So I'd want to pay tribute to the experience and the undoubted skills of those officers under the section 151 officer for managing Somerset's money and borrowing so carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members before I bring leader of council back in? I can see a hand. I can't see whose it is.
It's my chair, sorry, it's my chairman, sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Dean, please.
I'd like just to repeat what Liz has said, because I said it's quite complicated, our financial accounts. And I'd like to thank Jason and his staff for doing such a marvellous job. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Any other members? Um, councillor Fothergill, did you wish to um, you reserve your right to speak. Did you wish to come in now?
I I did. I think there's one further hand gone up though. I'm not sure. I can't actually see it.
I can't see it.
Uh, okay, that's fine.
Councillor John Clark, sorry, David.
That's fine. Shall I, do you want me to, do you want to take that one first?
Yes, councillor John Clark, if you could, please.
Could I just ask for clarification really, because uh, page 145, and this may be an answer, a question for Jason. Um, it talks about total external borrowing. And the forecast for the uh this uh this year, is it 2021, is 382 million? But then it's set to rise in 24 to 504 million. Could could um, could you please sort of just tell me how that's worked out? Because we hear a lot about how uh we can make savings through unitaries and we can reduce our borrowing, therefore reduce our debt. Now, but this is, this looks like we're going to increase our borrowing and therefore increase our debt. So, sorry about that. I just wondered if you could just have a brief clarification point, really. Thank you.
Uh, Jason, could you come in, back in on that one? Um, Mandy, could you help us out while we find, oh, there, there we go. Jason, thank you.
I do apologize. Couldn't seem to come up, come off me and get my camera on. Uh, yeah, so the the uh figures here reflect the capital programme and all the schemes that you've approved in the previous paper. So they take those into account and this sets out how they are potentially funded.
Okay.
Sorry, was that, was that the answer? I guess so.
Yes, I think that was the answer.
I'd welcome an answer, Jason, if you just, thank you.
Yeah, we'll get Jason to um contact you about that. Thank you. Um, if we move on then, David Fothergill, leader of council, please.
Hey, thank you, thank you, Peter. And um, I I I'm sure just to just to speak up there, I'm sure that Jason Vaughan and Mandy will be very happy to spend some time with um uh with John Clark, just just talking him through that. So I I I'm sure that will be organised. Um, I don't intend to to extend this any further really, Chair. Um, just to say that I I'm full support. And I also completely align myself with the comments about uh the the team that have put this report together. Um, I I read it with 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 real interest and learn everything, something from it every time I read through it. So it's 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 a good report. I'm very grateful to the team and I'm delighted to second it.
Thank you. No more comments. It has been proposed and seconded. And I will hand back over to Scott Monitoring Officer, if I could. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And again, I should alert, just take members through in terms of the order, in terms of voting. If I could just, again, just just for any members of the public that may have joined just at this moment, uh, we're looking at the recommendations associated with Paper B uh as part of Agenda Item Six. Um, those are set out certainly in terms of both the report itself. But again, just to clarify, uh, I do notice on the chair's schedule some minor typographical errors. Uh, I think both recommendations, uh, recommendation one refers to section two, that should in fact be section 12. Uh, recommendation two refers to section three, that should be section 13. And finally, recommendation three refers to section four, that should actually be section 14 of the reports as as published. Um, but again, just to, just to following that clarification, if I could just start in terms of, again, I'll be calling members alphabetically. If members could indicate again when called, whether they are for or against or abstaining in terms of the recommendations that are before the councils. If I start first of all with councillor Best?
For.
Councillor Bloomfield? I don't believe councillor Bloomfield.
I think he le- left the meeting.
Okay, in which case I shall record him as absent at this point. Councillor Bowne?
For.
Councillor Clayton?
For.
Councillor Caswell?
For.
Councillor Chilcutt?
For.
Councillor Clark?
For.
Councillor Coles?
For.
Councillor Dance?
For.
Councillor Dimmery?
For.
Councillor Filmer?
For.
Councillor Fothergill?
For.
Councillor Fraschini?
For.
Councillor Gauvier?
For.
Councillor Grosskopf?
For.
Councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Ham?
For.
Councillor Healy?
For.
Councillor Hewitt Cooper?
For.
Councillor James Hunt?
For.
Councillor John Hunt?
For.
Councillor Huxtable?
For.
Councillor Kendall?
For.
Councillor Lawrence?
For.
Councillor Lewis?
For.
Councillor Leishon?
For.
Councillor Jane Locke?
For.
Councillor Tony Locke?
Or.
Councillor Lovridge? Councillor Lovridge?
Abstain.
Councillor Munt?
For.
Councillor Napa?
For.
Councillor Nicholson?
Sorry, for.
Councillor Knoll?
For.
Councillor Oliver?
For.
Councillor Parham?
For.
Councillor Paul?
For.
Councillor Prior Sankey?
For.
Councillor Pullin?
For.
Councillor Redman?
For.
Councillor Revens?
Four, please.
Councillor Rigby?
For.
Councillor Ruddle?
For.
Councillor John Thorne? I don't believe I've seen an entry in the chats.
Yeah, there is chat. There is chat. Scott, I think I've seen it go through there.
Okay, I shall record that as four for the benefits of members of the public. And again councillor Verdon.
For.
Councillor Vijay.
For.
Councillor Wallace.
For.
Councillor Weddercop.
For.
Councillor Josh Williams.
For.
Councillor Rod Williams.
For.
Councillor, and finally councillor Woodman.
For.
Thank you, members. If you just wait a moment while I just tally the votes to report to the meeting.
Chair, can I just query, it's Tessa Munt.
Councillor Munt.
Thank you. Can I just query John Thorne?
Yeah.
I think his vote was actually for the previous vote.
I would agree, Tessa. I would agree.
In which case then I'll mark him as absent in terms of the vote.
Thank you.
And therefore, just to report to the council in terms of the recommendations, they are agreed by the council. They are agreed on the basis of forty seven votes for, zero against, and one abstention. Therefore, that motion is carried. Chairman.
Thank you for that. And that concludes item six. There will now be a short comfort break for approximately five minutes. If you could be ready to come back with us in five minutes' time, please, round about twenty past. Thank you. Thank you, members.
Having a lovely view of Cheddar Gorge. It makes me homesick.
Make sure that you realize I was here, Chair.
Thank you, Simon. And Karen, the interpreter, we're ready to start now. This is agenda item seven, the report of the HR committee. And it'll be councillor Chilcutt that will present. Councillor Chilcutt, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. So as you said, this is the report of the HR committee. The report gives details of the updated pay policy statement, which the HR committee, Policy Committee, considered on the nineteenth of January, and in line with section thirty eight point one of the Localism Act two thousand and eleven, is being brought to full council today for approval. The changes in the pay policy statement are minor and are in the main data amendments. For clarity, these can be seen as track changes in appendix A. I do need councillors to note that there is a typo in the papers in paragraph three point four of the paper. The national living wage will be eight pounds ninety one and not eighty nine pounds eighty one from the first of April. Also, councillors will notice the figure has not been updated in section nine at the bottom of page one hundred and eighty three. I can confirm that the median salary in the council as at the first of January twenty twenty one is twenty five thousand four hundred and eighty two, an increase from the previous twenty four thousand seven hundred and ninety nine. For completeness, the ratio to the chief exec salary in that paragraph remains the same at six point five five. The report does note the potential need for an extraordinary meeting of the HR committee to review SLT pay. And councillors may be interested to know that the pay claim for twenty one twenty two has just been received from trade unions, which will enable negotiations to start between local authority employers and trade unions. I'm therefore happy to propose the recommendation that the HR Policy Committee agreed to recommend the council agree the pay policy statement for the council for twenty one twenty two in brackets attached as appendix A to this report to have effect from the first of April twenty twenty one. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Chilcutt. I'm going to invite questions from members. And if necessary, Chris Squire, the resources and director, will be invited to answer any points raised. So I see Lee Redman, who is the seconder, would you like to speak, Steve?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to take this opportunity to second this proposal. I would like to take a moment just to formally note my thanks to all of our staff and the amazing way that they have reacted in these unprecedented times. I think a big shout out needs to go for council officers that have helped to make the vaccination process work alongside NHS staff. Chair, I'm happy to second the proposal.
Thank you, councillor Lee Redman. Councillor Andy Kendall.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just a quick one, Mandy. I know I was at the meeting, but I failed to note on that section nine, what is that ratio percentage? Did we actually mention that in the meeting? And I'm not sure whether that should be put in the report or not.
Just to respond, and Chris Squire can add if needed, but it's not a percentage, it's just a ratio of pay, so it's not a percentage. That's what you have to sort of lay out in the policy. I don't know if Chris has anything to add.
I think that's absolutely correct. We're obliged by law to provide this information as a ratio. I can do a quick calculation and send that on to councillor Kendall if required, if interested. But under legislation, we just prepare a ratio.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chris. Yep, councillor Bill Revens, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I'm delighted to look at this report. I'd like to associate myself with the comments made by the leader and by Lee Redman about our staff, who have been absolutely amazing through this time. My question is inspired by some action taken by a couple of our NHS trusts locally. The University of Bristol's trust and South West Ambulance's trust have agreed to thank their staff by offering them an extra day's annual leave in leave year twenty one twenty two. I wonder whether we've given any consideration to this in Somerset County Council to give a tangible reward to our members of staff as well as our sincere and grateful thanks, both in video format in many meetings and written as well. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, councillor Revens. Councillor Liz Leishon.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Just to return to Andy Kendall's point on page one eight three, is there not some information missing from point nine that the median earner figure has not been updated for twenty one and the ratio has not been updated for twenty one? I think those figures are missing, and this is a statutory requirement, I believe.
Could I respond to that?
I was going to say. Councillor Mandy, Chilcutt.
Thank you. If I could respond perhaps to councillor Reven's question first and then to councillor Letherton. So thank you councillor Reven for your proposal and your support for our amazing staff. Your question's very timely, and this is something that a senior leadership team is currently considering in terms of how best to recognize the work of our staff during this pandemic. I'll ask the director of HR and organizational development, Chris Squire, to contact you once a decision's been made. Just coming on to the comments from councillor Letherton, I did in my introduction sort of outline those, there's a typo, the eight ninety one to the eighty nine ninety one, and also outlined that the median salary in the council as at the first of January twenty one is twenty five thousand four hundred and eighty two, an increase from the previous twenty four thousand seven hundred and ninety nine. For completeness, the ratio to the chief executive salary in paragraph, in the next paragraph, remains the same at six point five five.
Thank you, Chair, and my apologies.
No, thank you. Thank you both. Right, well, I'm now going to invite the council to vote on this. Unless councillor Chilcutt or councillor Redman wish to say anything else before we do so.
No, thank you. I'm fine, Chair.
Okay.
No, thank you, Chair. Likewise.
Thank you both. In that case, we're going to put this to the vote. And I will ask Scott Wildridge to administer the vote, please. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Again, just for clarity, unlike the budget amendments, this is not, in a sense, a name vote. But it suffice to say that through virtual meetings, I will be calling out individuals' names and asking you just to set out how you're voting. Again, if I will start as always in alphabetical order, and again, if you could just indicate by saying whether you are for or against or abstaining. If I start initially then with councillor Best in respect to the pay policy statement.
For.
Councillor Bowne.
For.
Councillor Clayton.
For.
Councillor Caswell.
For.
Councillor Chilcutt.
For.
Councillor Clark.
For.
Councillor Coles.
For.
Councillor Dance.
For.
Councillor Dimmery.
For.
Councillor Filmer.
For.
Councillor Fathergill.
For.
Councillor Fraschini.
For.
Councillor Govey.
For.
Councillor Grosskopf.
For.
Councillor Hall.
For.
Councillor Ham.
For.
Councillor Healy.
For.
Councillor Hewitt Cooper.
For.
Councillor James Hunt.
For.
Councillor John Hunt.
For.
Councillor Huxtable.
For.
Councillor Kendall.
For.
Councillor Lawrence.
For.
Councillor Lewis.
For.
Councillor Leishon.
For.
Councillor Jane Locke.
For.
Councillor Tony Locke.
For.
Councillor Lovridge.
For.
Councillor Munt.
For.
Councillor Napa.
For.
Councillor Nicholson.
For.
For.
Councillor Knoll.
For.
Councillor Oliver.
For.
Councillor Parham.
For.
Councillor Paul.
For.
Councillor Priya Sanke.
For.
Councillor Pullin.
For.
Councillor Redman.
For.
Councillor Revens.
For please Mr Chairman.
Councillor Rigby.
For.
Councillor Ruddle.
For.
Councillor Taylor.
For.
Councillor Thorne. I'll record councillor Thorne as absent for the vote. Councillor Verdon.
For.
Councillor Vijay.
For.
Councillor Wallace.
For.
Councillor Weddercott.
For.
Councillor Josh Williams.
For.
Councillor Rod Williams.
For.
And finally councillor Woodman.
For.
And I should just tally the votes. If I just report to the meeting that those recommendations have been agreed by the council by 49 votes in favour, zero against and zero abstentions.
Thank you Scott Woodridge. I'm now going to move to item eight on our agenda and that is the report of the monitoring officer. I'm going to invite Scott to present the proposal starting from page 189, setting out the proposed member development strategy 2021 to 2025 and the proposed appointment of an independent member of the audit committee. Scott Woodridge please.
Scott, you're on mute I'm afraid.
Thank you leader. Again apologies just to say that clearly the report and recommendations are set out on page 189 of the papers that were published. You will see as part of that report, there are two main items of business that are being brought before the council today for your consideration. One relates to the proposed member development strategy for 2021 to 25. That follows on from the existing member development strategy that was put in place in 2017. And again, that's fundamental in terms of the way in which the council both supports, develops and assists elected members in fulfilling their duties as both a local council councillor but also when sitting on the various committees of the council, either in either a scrutiny function or even indeed in terms of decision making roles as you are today. The member development strategy itself clearly seeks to set out how the council has embraced and indeed taken forward new ways of working, not least of which the use of the virtual meetings we are currently in, together also in terms of the way in which councillors can now work much more remotely than they have been able to previously, both in their formal capacity but two in terms of their constituency work and work with their local communities. So that's certainly reflected in terms of the member development strategy and you'll appreciate in terms of developing those proposals, we've developed those with the council's member development panel, which is a cross-party group of members, again that have been able to provide some insight and foresight into the proposed strategy. So that's the proposals that are set out in paragraph 2.1 in terms of the member development strategy and the strategy itself is set out in Annex A. The second part of my report relates to proposals that have come forward via the audit committee. And again, they principally respond to a national review undertaken by Sir Tony Redmond, known as the Redmond Review. And again, many councils across England have been considering that review together with some of the specific recommendations. What I'm bringing forward today on behalf of the audit committee is one aspect of that review, which is a proposal for the council to consider the appointment of an independent person to the audit committee going forward. And again, just to help the council, in addition to that being set out as one of the recommendations in the Redmond Review and from a number of other professional bodies, a number of other councils have already made some headway on that particular proposal and already have independent persons as part of their membership. And at that point Chair, I will obviously pause to take any questions that members may have prior to considering those recommendations.
Okay members, so do any councillors have any questions they'd like to raise please? I'm not seeing any hands come up. If anybody, if I'm missing anybody, can you just shout? I'm checking the table and there's no sign of anybody wishing to raise any comment. Okay, so I'm going to turn to the proposers and seconder. The proposer is councillor David Fathergill and the seconder is councillor Locke. So councillor Fathergill first please.
I think Chairman, it's actually Mandy Chilcutt on this one, so I'm going to defer to Mandy.
Okay, sorry, I've got a different name here in the meeting, so councillor Chilcutt please.
I apologise for confusing you Chair. So firstly, thank you to the monitoring officer for his report and also as mentioned, the cross-party member development committee for their input into the member development strategy. The strategy in Annex A as we've heard includes more emphasis on virtual learning and the use of IT, something that today clearly demonstrates and we've all come a very long way and very much have relied on it in the past year and I have to give thanks to Democratic Services and the IT team for all the help and the support they've given to us all. Moving to Annex B, I very much welcome the appointment of an independent co-opted member to the audit committee in line with its recommendation in the Redmond Review. I'm therefore happy to propose and fully support the recommendations laid out in the papers. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Chilcutt. Councillor Jane Locke.
Chair, thank you. I'm very happy to second this proposal. Oh, sorry, I've just turned the camera off again. It seems very sensible and anything that helps with member development and engaging members with the work of Somerset County Council is welcome and I hope that this goes a long way towards that, thank you.
Thank you councillor Jane Locke. Councillor Mike Rigby.
Thank you Chair. I can't get my camera to work at the moment, so I shall have to remain incognito I'm afraid. I just wanted to support the comments of councillor Chilcutt about the excellent work that our governance team has done in supporting us with IT. I've had a few difficulties along the way, but they've always been quick to sort them out and we probably shouldn't single people out, but Mike Bryant in particular has been a star in that respect, so my thanks to him and the rest of the team, thank you.
Thank you councillor Rigby and I trust your camera will come back shortly. Thank you for your kind comments towards the staff, which I think we all heartily agree with you. Right, well, there seem to be no more questions here. I note that councillor David Huxtable has asked that votes unless named can be put in the chat function, so that we will try and do. And I will move this now to the vote, so Scott Woodridge.
Thank you Chair and again, the similar format for what we've done for the previous item, certainly in terms of members indicating their voting. This is obviously in relation to Agenda Item Eight and the recommendations that are set out on pages 189 and 190 of the agenda papers that have been published in advance. So if I can again just start and I'll work through the order of members in alphabetical order, if I could start initially with councillor Best. Councillor Best.
Monitoring Officer, I think there's some confusion about, as Chairman just said, we're going to put it in the comments column and now you're taking a named vote or a list of votes on it, I'm not sure. I think there's a bit of confusion as to which we're doing.
Apologies Chair, I was going to suggest that certainly that'd be something we could consider. It is easier for us to monitor in a live meeting with members indicating verbally rather than in the chat.
Go on then, quick.
I think verbally would be better to be honest, for members of the public to hear us say. Sorry about that David.
Again, if I could just return then just to verbal voting, because that would be certainly easier in terms of monitoring. So if I start initially again with councillor Best please. Is councillor Best there? I should record councillor Best as absent for the vote. Councillor Bowden.
For.
Councillor Clayton.
For.
Councillor Caswell.
For.
Councillor Chilcutt.
For.
Councillor Clark.
For.
Councillor Coles.
For.
Councillor Dance.
For, councillor Best just messaged saying he's been kicked out of the meeting, so he's going to try and rejoin.
Councillor Dimmering.
For.
Councillor Filmer.
For.
Councillor Fathergill.
For.
For.
Councillor Fraschini.
For.
Councillor Gobie.
For.
Councillor Grosskop.
For.
Councillor Hall.
For.
Councillor Ham.
For.
Councillor Healy.
For.
Councillor Hewitt Cooper.
For.
Councillor James Hunt.
For.
Councillor John Hunt.
For, thank you.
Councillor Huxtable.
For.
Councillor Kendall.
For.
Councillor Lawrence.
For.
Councillor Lewis.
For.
Councillor Leishon.
For.
Councillor Jane Locke.
For.
Councillor Tony Locke.
For.
Councillor Lovridge.
For.
Councillor Munt.
For.
Councillor Napper.
For.
Councillor Nicholson.
For.
Councillor Knoll.
For.
Councillor Oliver.
For.
Councillor Parham.
For.
Councillor Paul.
For.
Councillor Priya Sanke.
For.
Councillor Pullin.
For.
Councillor Redman.
For.
Councillor Revens.
For please.
Councillor Rigby.
For.
Councillor Ruddle.
For.
Councillor Taylor.
For.
Councillor Thorne. Don't believe councillor Thorne is present still, so councillor Verdon.
For.
Councillor Vijay.
For.
Councillor Wallace.
For.
Councillor Weddercott. Councillor Weddercott.
For.
Councillor Josh Williams.
For.
Councillor Rod Williams.
For.
Councillor Woodman.
For.
Again, if I just report to the council that the recommendations have been agreed by majority vote, again just for clarity, I mean I will undertake to look at ways in which we may be able to improve voting where we don't have name votes required and I will certainly do that for the next meeting. But again, just to report that where we don't formally require name votes and I'm just required to report where there is a majority vote and the majority vote in terms of those recommendations is that they are carried and therefore they are approved. Chair.
Thank you monitoring officer. And I move to Agenda Item Nine, that's the report of the Joint Independent Remuneration Panel and I'm going to invite Scott Woodridge, the monitoring officer, to speak and also Mr John Thompson, who is the Chair of the panel. Mr Woodridge.
Thank you Chair and again hopefully members will appreciate that certainly in terms of on an annual basis, you're usually required to both consider the review of the scheme of members allowances and again, as part of that review, the council must have regards to the recommendations and report of the Joint Independent Remuneration Panel and that's a body that's been formed now for several years. That's a panel that not only advises the county council but also advises Somerset, Western Taunton and also Mendip District Council in terms of their respective schemes of members allowances. Clearly you have a report that has been developed over several months with the panel itself, that we have the panel chair who's also present again who can just give you some context to that report, but you will also see within the Chair's schedule that there is also a proposed early motion from the Leader of Council in respect of the proposals that have been presented. So at this point, I will just introduce the Chair of the panel to the council, that's Mr John Thompson, who's the Chair of the Joint Independent Remuneration Panel. Again, he will just help just set the context to the report before the Leader of Council is then invited to provide a initial response.
Thank you. We last carried out a fundamental review of allowances at Somerset in 2017 and as they last for four years at a maximum, a full review was due again now. However, due to the possible reorganisation of local government in Somerset, the Leader of the council asked that we restrict our thoughts to a single year's timescale, what the panel calls a light touch review. There are two themes that we consider as part of our review. The first is that current members are adequately recompensed for the time and effort spent on the work of the council. The second is that allowances are set at a level which is sufficient to ensure that people are not put off from standing for election to the council whilst at the same time, the level of allowances is not so high that the public would be concerned. The two themes are of course interlinked. In a fundamental review, we would do more background work on pay and wage levels in the community the council serves, but in a light touch review, we concentrate on comparison with Somerset, with similar councils, that is Somerset's peers, a survey of attitudes amongst current members and interviews with group leaders and a representative sample of other members to give us a check on what happens at the council. The panel is very grateful for the time and open attitude of members who have participated in the survey and interviews and I'll pause at that point.
Thank you Mr Thorne, I think it's only right that when you're thanking people that I, on behalf of all the councillors, should be thanking you for the stalwart work that you and your committee have done. And as another councillor had said recently, if this was a light touch report, he was astounded, it's a very thorough and very good report and obviously I can't say more than that prior to any vote, but thank you for your time and please, will you take back from the council our thanks to all members of your panel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor David Fathergill.
Thank you Chairman, just making sure my camera's coming on there. Thank you. I too would like to add my thanks to John Thompson and his entire team. I had the pleasure of meeting them for some 40 minutes and talking through and I think they've done an incredibly thorough job, they've made some really interesting points and I welcome their report. Unfortunately, I think this is probably the wrong meeting to consider it. We are in a position at the moment where we're awaiting a letter which we believe will start consultation on the future of this council within a matter of days. within a matter of days. And we also believe that at that point, very shortly after that point, that a decision would be taken on the deferment of the May election. Although I must encourage all councillors to assume the election is taking place until it's actually deferred. So but I think it's right that we therefore bring forward an adjournment and ask for this to be deferred until our May council. At that point, we will have much better clarity on the election process and also the reorganisation process. So I make the proposal that in view of the outstanding government decisions regarding the timetable and next steps for the local government reorganisation proposals and the council's request for the deferral of the council elections, I would propose that the council agrees to adjourn the consideration and debate of the panel's report and recommendations until the next full council meeting in May 2021. That would, I hope, allow for much needed clarity from the government on those strategic matters in order for the council to make a more informed decision on the scheme of members allowances and any further work that the council may request the panel to undertake. That's my proposal to adjourn the item, Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Fothergill. Councillor Jane Locke. Councillor Jane Locke, please.
Chairman, I'm happy to second that proposal. And I'd also like to thank the panel for the work that they did. It was a very interesting and enjoyable forty minutes to talk to somebody different. And they listened very carefully and were very thoughtful and considerate. And I'd like to thank them for that. But I'm very happy to propose to second the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jane Locke. I see two hands up, councillor Dean Ruddle and councillor Tessa Munt. Is this for a question of clarity?
No, just to say I fully support David and Jane.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, councillor Ruddle. Councillor Tessa Munt.
Thank you, Chair. And seeing as how we're moving to a lighter light touch, I just wondered whether it might be more appropriate, perhaps, for us to consider this, the council to consider this at the first full council after a decision is made, rather than deferring it to the next May meeting, when, as far as I understood, it was not a certainty that we would know what form of council we might have and how many councillors might be involved and all the rest of it. It just struck me struck me as being more logical for possibly David Fothergill to suggest that this should be brought forward at the first full council after the government has told us which way we're going to go.
Thank you, councillor Munt. I see councillor Fothergill's got his hand up and perhaps he'll reply to that. Thank you.
I think what I'm asking for really, Chairman, is to defer this until we've got greater clarity on the election, which may or may not take place. I think I think we do need to return to it at that point. I've got a lot of sympathy with with what Tessa Munt is suggesting. But I think we just need to keep this on the agenda and make sure that it does come back to the May council. And I understand that by that point, a decision won't have been made. But we will have much greater clarity in terms of the election and whether there is a fifth year to this quadrillion. So so my proposal stands, and I think that the Monitoring Officer is quite happy with that proposal.
Thank you, both of you. I'm going to move the this item to the vote. And I'm going to refer it to Scott Woodridge, please. Thank you, Chair. And again, I know that both members of the public but also elected members, you'll have reference to the Chair's schedule that was published on the website yesterday and to all members, which sets out in written form, the proposal that both councillor Fothergill has proposed and councillor Locke has seconded for you to now consider. Again, just following the format we've been doing so far, I should be calling out names alphabetically as I call your name. If you could just indicate, please, if you are for, against, or abstaining. So if I start initially with councillor Best.
Four.
Councillor Bowne. Councillor Bowne. I recall councillor Bowne as absent. Oh, sorry, councillor Bowne is for. Councillor Clayton.
Four.
Councillor Caswell.
Four.
Councillor Chilcutt.
Four.
Councillor Clark.
Four.
Councillor Coles.
Four.
Councillor Dance.
Four.
Councillor Dimmering.
Four.
Councillor Filmer.
Four.
Councillor Fothergill.
Four.
Councillor Fraschini.
Four.
Councillor Govey.
Four.
Councillor Grosskopf.
Four.
Councillor Hall.
Four.
Councillor Ham.
Four.
Councillor Healy.
Four.
Councillor Hewitt Cooper.
Four.
Councillor James Hunt.
Four.
Councillor John Hunt.
Four.
Councillor Huxtable.
Four.
Councillor Kendall.
Four.
Councillor Lawrence.
Four.
Councillor Lewis.
Four.
Councillor Leishon.
Four.
Councillor Jane Locke.
Four.
Councillor Tony Locke.
Four.
Councillor Lovridge.
Four.
Councillor Munt.
Four.
Councillor Napper.
Four.
Councillor Nicholson.
Four.
Councillor Knoll.
Four.
Councillor Oliver.
Four.
Councillor Parham.
Four.
Councillor Paul.
Four.
Councillor Priya Sankey.
Four.
Councillor Pullin.
Four.
Councillor Redman.
Four.
Councillor Evans.
Four.
Councillor Rigby.
Four.
Councillor Ruddle.
Four.
Councillor Taylor.
Four.
Councillor Thorne. I recall councillor Thorne as absent for the vote. Councillor Verdon.
Four.
Councillor Vijay.
Four.
Councillor Wallace.
Four.
Councillor Weddycop.
Four.
Councillor Josh Williams.
Four.
Councillor Rod Williams.
Four.
And finally, councillor Woodman.
Four.
I therefore report to the council that the unanimous vote of the members' presence is that the proposal put forward by councillor Fothergill and secondly by councillor Locke to defer and adjourn consideration this item to the May meeting has been carried. Therefore, this meeting, sorry, this item will be carried over to the next meeting of full council.
Thank you, members, and thank you, Scott Woodridge. In a minute, we're going to, I'm going to announce an adjournment. But it will also give a good break. And it's time I thanked both Karen and Anne Smith for the sterling work they're doing to assist those people that may not be able to understand. And I ask that when we consider continue afterwards, that you'll try and use your your screens so that they can lip read and pass on the words you're saying. But thank you both, ladies. That is very good and very, very welcome. And I'm going to now suggest that we break for half an hour and start back here promptly at one thirty. That's thirty one minutes time. Thank you all.
Afternoon, councillors, officers and members of the public and to our two interpreters. It's now 13:30 and I'm going to now move to item number 10, which is the requisitioned item.
Okay, we will start at thirteen thirty-three, which is one more minute to go. Right, John Clark, councillor Clark, thank you for your patience, John. I'm sorry to have kept you, but it would appear that most of us are here now. So, John, if you'd like to start your presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair, and can I first off just thank councillor Munt for seconding this item. So, so one of the lessons of the coronavirus pandemic is how it's impacted on the financial wellbeing of our communities. It has clearly demonstrated the precarious nature of financial security. It's impacted most on those we rely on, care workers on zero hour contracts, shop workers on minimum wage, low paid, and the three million self-employed, those who have fallen through the nest of the very much welcomed government financial support. Many who felt safe and secure now feel insecure. The universal basic income is unconditional, paid to all and cannot be withdrawn. It will provide the financial security to those who most need it and remove the fear of insecurity and provide peace of mind. Importantly, it would address the needs of those 4.5 million who live in poverty and would ensure people no longer have to make the stark choices, heating or food. We are facing the financial crisis. Financial inequality impacts on social and community wellbeing. The cost from a crisis to health and social services could be immense. Poverty and inequality poses a real threat to our economic recovery. We can envisage a variety of scenarios in which personal income will be rendered temporarily or permanently insecure, and in which spending power will therefore be reduced and the risk of further recession increased. We are facing changes now and in the future through the potential for further pandemics and impact of climate change. UBI offers an opportunity to face those challenges, just as the formation of the NHS faced the challenges post the Second World War. By providing a secure layer of income, UBI would enable people to readjust their employment hours in order to undertake additional caring and community work. It would be a solid financial platform on which people would be able to build, providing opportunities for individuals to make choices about their employment, to fully compensate for those providing care, informally or formally. It will make full-time paid employment less necessary and will encourage home-based and part-time employment. People will be able to choose their own working lifestyles as well as supporting their communities in a voluntary capacity. Through the financial security and permanency of UBI, individuals could be empowered to embark on new enterprises. UBI promotes entrepreneurship. The poorest and vulnerable will benefit most and they are more likely to spend their money on essential items in their own community, which in turn stimulates local growth. We are not asking for members today to support UBI. We are asking members to vote in favour of the opportunity through trials to establish the benefits and shortfalls of any implementation of UBI. I would ask you, why would you oppose the opportunity to support the use of pilots to learn what benefits UBI brings or indeed does not bring? Returning to the NHS, it did not just appear, it was in effect trialled in Scotland through the Highlands and Islands Medical Service. Pilots have already taken place in Canada, USA, Finland, Brazil and other countries. And researchers looking at the Canadian UBI pilot said, many recipients reported improvements in their physical and mental health, labour market participation, food security, housing stability, financial status and social relationships. They also found recipients, use quotes, use less health services less frequently. I believe UBI reduces poverty, improves health and mental wellbeing, stimulates growth and builds healthy, resilient communities. Please vote for this motion and pilots so we can provide evidence or not that this is true. Somerset has a history of social innovation, a wealth of expertise, active networks across communicate communities, business and public services, and is ideally based to pilot the UBI. Please vote in favour of this motion, thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Clark. Councillor Tessa Munt to second.
I'm very happy to second John's motion and if I may, I'll reserve my right to speak in this debate after any other comments have been made and received, thank you.
Thank you councillor Munt. Councillor Martin Dimmeri.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, if I may support this, this motion. In October, a cross-party group of MPs called for the government to allow councils to run universal basic income trials in response to mass unemployment and unemployment fears. Five hundred MPs, Lords and local councillors supported the need for pilot schemes. As John said, we're only looking at a pilot scheme, this is not something that would cost Somerset money. And universal basic income is not a new concept. In fact, it's not a great recommendation, but Richard Nixon tried it in, in, in the States to, to some, with some success. Recent research by non-political organisations like the Royal Society of Arts, Manufacturers and Commerce and the British Medical Journal indicate that a basic income does not make recipients any more state-dependent or unwilling to work. The trial in Finland showed a significant increase in health and wellbeing. People who come out of work were usually those choosing to look after their children, retraining for another career or taking on further studies. So it allowed more flexibility. The universal basic income actually fits in with zero contract hours, whether we like them or not, allowing both employers and workers greater flexibility and support. And, and it particularly supports the self-employed who have been somewhat forgotten in, in the furlough scheme in difficult times like Covid. And it also keeps more money circulating in the economy. The, the question is, how can it be afforded? Now, the additional money required would actually be greater, would greatly reduce by the simplification of the benefit system because everybody would get the essential payment. And the benefit system, as we know, has extensive administrative costs and is quite arbitrary and indiscriminating in, in its means, in, in the means-adjusted system that it, it suggests. By scrapping the tax-free personal allowance and replacing that with a flat payment, latest studies suggest trials of only, only forty-eight pounds per hour per week will bring more people into the taxation system and so much of the money will be recovered. Seventy-five percent of households would benefit from UBI whilst the richest would pay a higher tax rate. The current recommendations threshold for raising tax will be those earning over £125,000 per annum. The Royal Society of Arts report also suggests an increase in tax on heavy polluters, which should be considered as well as closing tax loopholes currently enjoyed by those who can most afford to contribute more. So I think it would be a progressive, popular and fascinating experiment for Somerset to be, to, to hold and, and to have a trial here. I can only think it would benefit the less well-off, the most indeed, reducing poverty and inequality and simplifying our complex benefit system for fairer support. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Martin Dimmeri and I'm going to speak to councillor Josh Williams, please, Josh Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Although I have, you know, some sort of, I suppose, a degree of sympathy with sentiments expressed by the councillors who have just spoken, I'm not sure UBI is, is the answer to some of the things that they are suggesting. I think it's worth mentioning that in the, the Finnish example, you know, that particular trial was ended after two years because it was felt that those who were unemployed were no more likely to find jobs on UBI than standard state benefit. And in fact, in two thousand and eighteen, the Joseph Rowntree Foundation, which is one of the leading charities on poverty in the UK, found that universal base income would actually have an adverse effect on the most vulnerable. And the primary reason for this is, is that by providing everyone with a baseline income, you presumably mean replacing means-tested support for things like housing and childcare. And in a market-oriented economy such as the UK, this potentially means that you have large shortfalls or large surpluses for others. And so how far your UBI can stretch will be dependent on where you live and consciously or not, UBI will not be providing specific help in specific circumstances. And this means our welfare distribution would not be concentrated on the poorest, but rather likely to benefit those on moderate incomes most. And in the same research, it found that all these things taken, taken together in a UBI system, there was actually a rise of child poverty of sixty percent. And, and I don't think anyone, you know, who attended council today would, would want to see that type of increase. But putting aside the increase to the public purse, which I think most recent studies have shown actually there would need to be an increase in the, in the basic marginal tax rate or cuts to existing spending, a universal basic income might appear progressive but raises huge questions on sustainability and whether it can actually achieve lasting improvements in welfare and equality. What UBI does do however, it opens the debate on the role of conditionality within our existing benefit system. However, I'm not convinced that universal basic income is, is the answer. So unfortunately I can't support this at the time being.
Thank you councillor Josh Williams. Councillor David Fothergill.
Thank, thank you, Chairman. It was all going so well, wasn't it? We're having those votes this morning where actually we did seem that we were coming together and, and we did have some common ground. I'm afraid we're just about to, to spoil the record for today, I think. So first of all, this is not a vote against taking part in a pilot, because the pilots don't exist. The government haven't announced pilots and of course if they did announce pilots, then Somerset has always would be very keen to take place and take part, I'm sure, and would be very happy, I'm sure, to put out a name forward if that's what full council wanted to do. But whilst I understand the motive and the sentiment behind this requisitioned item, this is a subject which is very much driven by party politics and unfortunately it's national party politics and that's why it's such a shame that it's been brought here today really. And I think had John had the courtesy to mention it before he submitted it, I'd have, I'd have said exactly that. But there have been debates in Westminster, as we know, particularly the one on the thirteenth of October twenty twenty, it was stated that, that universal basic income does not target to help those that need it most, stressing additional support during a coronavirus outbreak such as the retention scheme and changes to statutory sick pay and universal credit. So I believe this is a debate for government to have in Westminster and not one for this council. It relates to national policy and not with decisions made in this chamber. I will not be supporting this requisitioned item then, but I would add again that if the government decides to run any pilot schemes, then of course Somerset County Council will step forward actively considering taking part and I would hope that they would do so. But at this point, I cannot and will vote against it.
Thank you councillor Fothergill. Councillor Bill Revins, you did have your hand up.
Thank you kindly, Mr Chairman. Yeah, just, just, just in response to councillor Fothergill's point about waiting for the government to potentially bring forward a pilot announcement on this, I do recall that this council may have preempted the call for unitary councils coming forwards some months ago and we, we went forward and launched our bid before the invitation came in on that. So I don't understand the consistency of that argument. I'm all in favour of UBI, I think it would be great to, to, to support our poorest people and to reduce the bureaucracy that goes around our benefit system. It's so difficult for people to access the help they need, this system would help them hugely. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bill Revins. Councillor David Fothergill.
Sorry, Chairman, I'm very grateful for Bill Revins setting up the conversation on one Somerset and unitary again and I'll just come back in and say, there was, there was no new policy on unitary for us to respond to because it's always been there. And in fact, I will remind him, there's a hundred and fifty-three unitary authorities across the council, across the country. And in fact, there are only twenty-four remaining two-tier areas with county and district. So, so it's been there for a long time, I'm sure Bill's not quite old enough to remember nineteen seventy-four and beyond that, but he will remember recent unitaries which have been established very successfully. And now's the time that we actually allow our residents to benefit like people in Wiltshire, Dorset, Cornwall, North Somerset, Baines and of course Buckinghamshire most recently and a host of others. But thank you for reminding me.
Thank you councillor Fothergill. Councillor John Hunt.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, just a, a question to the proposers of this, if I may. I did ask in an earlier meeting this morning about where does the money come from? I'm still a little confused on how giving out all this money to, I'm assuming this is to every person in, in the land as it were, not in the test of course, but if that's the idea for the whole country if it was. Where that money actually comes from, I appreciate some of that money will be spent and produced this, that and the other, but I am concerned about that. Where does the money come from? And another point that I was a little confused by, by when listening to the proposal. So if you could just bear with me, if, if for example somebody is on universal credit and they're claiming that, that credit, which many, many people are, if they receive, let's say, the whole episode, for example, they didn't go ahead and hold the, the pilot, but they were talking about up to a hundred pounds a week, what you're here talking about around fifty pounds, well, let's say they get a hundred pounds for argument sake per week and they're on universal credit, am I to assume therefore that that one hundred pounds would actually be taken back from their universal credit because that will be a declarable income? And, and I then am confused if, if I'm right, I'm then confused how that actually helps the less well-off. And so if you could give me the answer to that, I'd really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Fothergill, do you wish to come back on that?
No, sorry Chairman, my hand's not up, I don't think, if it is, I apologise.
No, 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 it's not, I was given the opportunity. Okay, I see no other hand, oh, Martin Dimmeri now, councillor Martin Dimmeri.
John asked a question, I'm, I did try and answer some of those points in, in my case and I don't want to repeat it. But the, the government's current benefits system occupies just over a third of, of our national spending and that will go up inevitably in the next year after Covid. So that's the first, that's the first level you're going to find. With regard to universal credit, nobody will be worse off under the system. And I'm fairly, fairly carefully after that, that the tax holds, the tax system of loopholes would, would have to be adjusted. So yes, people that earn more will pay more tax in order to cover this, but nobody would be any worse off. It, it demands reconsidering, but the, the point I would make again is we're talking about a pilot here. We're talking about asking to be involved in a pilot should one go ahead. And, and there's a lot of, a lot of information available for anybody to make their minds up on this particular issue.
Thank you councillor Dimmeri. I see no other hands up there, so I'm going to go to councillor Tessa Munt as the second if she would like to speak.
Thank you, Chair, yes I would. I really don't see the danger in voting for this. All that is being asked is that the leader should write a few letters. that is being asked is that the leader should write a few letters, and that he might, if he gets some responses, he might copy those responses to the councillors concerned, his group, our group, everybody, all the councillors across the chamber. So I really don't see the danger. I don't see how it's going to hurt. I'm really quite shocked to find that councillor Fothergill decided that Somerset isn't going to come up with any ideas in future. And that, you know, it's in the long run, we have to look at the reality. And if we don't have any ideas and we don't come forward with anything, it's a bit of a shame that we don't have the confidence to suggest that we might try things. Now, I'm not sure, in response to Josh, he said he wasn't sure this was the answer. I'm not sure it's the answer either. It's a policy that we endorse. But that's the whole point of having a pilot. And I think anything that brings money into Somerset from public funds will counter against the fact that we have enormous differences here in the South West from those. We have high housing costs. And as has been mentioned so many times before, there are over 8,000 children who live in poverty in Somerset. Why would we not want to try and see whether we couldn't do something about that? I find it extraordinary. And of course, behind those 8,000 children are a large number of thousands of other families with whom those children live. So I just think there's no real danger in voting for this. As the point was made earlier, when you give money to people who are less well off, they're not in a position to be able to save. They can only spend it. And it's highly likely that people will spend it in their local area. Because, and that will just help the local economy. So I would... Sorry, is somebody else speaking?
Sorry, I beg your pardon. I just was trying to unmute myself in readiness, Tessa. I do apologise.
Okay, fine. Thank you. So I don't believe there'll be anything in the way of an increase to the public purse. One of the advantages to this is it values all people equally. And I know that in times past, in a previous job, I know that doing means testing, when I was connected with the Surviving Winter Appeal, which was the most amazing project that came through the Somerset Community Foundation in 2011, when I asked whether older and, oh, sorry, whether wealthier people could be screened out of that, it involved the Department for Work and Pensions having four, sorry, 11 different sets of filters to screen people out. So I think the only way to deal with things is probably to go in the universal direction, see how it works. Let's have a look here in Somerset, where there are people who have a lot of challenges in the way of their housing costs, their living costs, our energy costs, because we have so many old buildings that are difficult to insulate. And let's see if we can't actually try this. If councillor Fothergill feels this is so dangerous, then I would perhaps suggest an amendment. And that is if the government is to set up a pilot, then Somerset County Council will apply. Maybe he and his councillors feel able to vote for something like that. Thank you.
Councillor Fothergill.
Thank you, Chairman. I think I've been named twice there. So I think I've got a right of reply. I think this, we just have to go back and put in context. This is about applying to join a pilot which doesn't exist. This pilot does not exist, and the government has to take a decision whether they create these pilots. That's the decision being made. And whilst I understand the words about poverty and children and everything that Tessa Munt brought into this conversation, of course, we get it. And that's why we've put through such a progressive budget this morning. And I think therefore to suggest otherwise would be, you know, rather unfortunate on a day when we've actually agreed on that and our priorities. So I think that's unfortunate. I just cannot see why we would support writing to join a pilot which doesn't exist. And if a pilot does exist, then of course we will consider it. But I'm not willing to put that forward as an amendment, and I certainly wouldn't be willing to support that as amendment either.
Sorry, I put that forward as an amendment, Chair. So, and I have to say that, you know, all of the largesse this morning, I accept absolutely. We were in a moment of peace and tranquility. But there was a savage lack of any mention of carers and young carers and other groups in particular. I have put forward, I've suggested an amendment. I'd like that amendment to be tabled, please.
Chair, could I just come back before that amendment?
Yeah, can we all wait, please? Because everybody's butting in. I wanted to go to John Clark, please. Councillor John Clark.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just clarify? So item one of this sort of motion is that there's two parts to it. We're requesting the government undertakes pilots. And I appreciate, as David says, they haven't put in place any pilots. So that's why we're requesting it. And I would add that we're not alone in this. There's a number of local authorities, Norwich, Oxford, for example, who have had similar motions passed at their council meetings. And the second part of that, number one, is that Somerset be included in any pilots. So I'm not very clear as to why David is opposing this motion. I would also say that David is saying that this motion is something outside the remit of Somerset. But I would remind him that at the last full council, I think it was the last one, it was agreed by full council that we would write to the government about test and trace. So there is some level of precedent around this. And I can't see why, as a local authority, we can't suggest things to government and support the government if they then choose to undertake a pilot. And lastly, yes, there is detail about the costs. And I heard what Josh was saying. I don't agree. But I would also want to say that the UBI would not exclude other payments that people may need, like carers allowance, like disability income. So it's only a basic income for everyone to have. On top of that, people would still receive, for example, housing benefit. And I know there's questions about costs, but that's why we need to ask the government to run these pilots. So we can see, actually see what the impact is in terms of cost and benefit. Thank you.
Councillor Clark, thank you. I'm going to go to councillor Mike Rigby, then councillor John Woodman, and then come back to councillor Tessamunt. So councillor Mike Rigby.
Thank you, Chair. I wonder if councillor Munt's amendment could just be repeated, please.
Councillor Munt, can you do that, please?
Certainly, Chair, yes. So my suggestion was that we should, the amendment, if I try and get the wording about right, that we should, if there is a trial, that Somerset County Council would be bound to request that it is part of that trial.
Okay, Chair, thank you for that. And I think councillor Clark's clarifications were very useful. I heard the leader of the council, the leader of the Conservative group, say that in the event that trials were held, Somerset would apply. So I think councillor Munt's amendment is useful there as well. But I don't see at all why there's any difficulty with requesting that the pilots take place. And given that councillor Fothergill has said that he's quite happy for Somerset to apply, why not write to governments and request that a trial takes place? There seems to be a real logical disconnect between those two positions. I don't understand that.
Councillor Fothergill.
I'm not going to extend this any much further, Chairman. Just to say, I think we'll need to listen back to the audio, Mike. But I think what I actually said was that if a trial, if a pilot came forward, then of course we would look at it and we would have a debate about whether we should take place. But I hope that we would. I think those are my words, and that's certainly what I meant.
Thank you. Councillor Woodman, who were indicating, unless that was a legacy hand?
Well, I was going to take it down. But all I can say is I wouldn't support this because I wouldn't join anything without seeing the implications of it first. And it's not the kind of thing my politics would support anyway.
Okay, I'm going to go back to councillor Munt because she is trying to table an amendment. And I think we need to bottom that out and get a second, if she's going to do that.
Thank you, Chair. I have a second. Bill Revins has said he would second the amendment.
Okay. And can we, so Scott is busy writing it down. Can we have, can you, do you mind bearing with us and just repeating it again so we've got it right, so we can put it to the meeting?
So it is additional to John Clark's. It's not instead of any part of it. And it is that if there is a trial, that Somerset should apply to be part of that trial, which is totally in line with councillor Fothergill's statement earlier on.
Chairman, point of order. Can I just check? I'm not sure what councillor Munt said then. She said it wasn't an amendment, it was an addition to.
No, 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 sorry. I did say it is an amendment. What I was saying is it is in addition to. It's not replacing any words in John Clark's motion, as it stands, requisitioned item. I'm saying it is additional wording. So I want to be really clear that I'm not taking any words out of John Clark's motion. I am adding words, which say that if the government decides to want trials, then Somerset will apply to be part of that trial.
Right. So Tessa, this is effectively number four. So we then should be voting on this, your amendment, and then work our way back through them. Everybody in agreement with this? Everybody understands what I'm going to do?
Sorry, Chair.
Your amendment is effectively the fourth item, the fourth amendment to this. So we will then, I'm going to put that to the vote because I think there's been sufficient talk and we need to have an answer, a clarity. And I'm going to ask Scott Woodridge to administer the vote, please. So passing it to the monitoring officer.
Thank you, Chair. And again, I believe the Chair has just clarified, and I'm just checking that members understand that in terms of what you're about to vote on, you're being asked to vote on the amendment that has been proposed by councillor Munt, seconded by councillor Evans. The effect of that amendment would be effectively to add a fourth recommendation to what has already been published in the requisitioned item. And that proposed amendment states if there is a trial, that Somerset County Council should apply to be part of that trial. What I will now do is I will call out members' names again in alphabetical order. If you could indicate whether you are for, against, or abstaining against that proposed amendment, just the amendment at this stage, I will highlight. So I shall start initially with councillor Best.
Agree.
Councillor Bloomfield, have you rejoined the meeting? Which has also marked councillor Bloomfield as absent. Councillor Bowden?
Against.
Councillor Clayton?
Against.
Councillor Caswell?
Against.
Councillor Chilcutt?
Against.
Councillor Clark?
Four.
Councillor Coles?
Four.
Councillor Dance?
Four.
Councillor Dimory?
Four.
Councillor Filmer?
Against.
Councillor Fothergill?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, councillor Fothergill, I missed that. Was that?
Sorry, I don't know. Is my microphone on? I'm not sure. Oh, yes. Sorry, Scott, I'm against.
Councillor Fraschini?
Against.
Councillor Govea?
Four.
Councillor Grosskop?
Against.
Councillor Hall?
Against.
Councillor Ham?
Against.
Councillor Healy?
Against.
Councillor Hughett Cooper?
Against.
Councillor James Hunt?
Against.
Councillor John Hunt?
Four.
Councillor Huxtable?
Against.
Councillor Kendall?
Four.
Councillor Lawrence?
Against.
Councillor Lewis?
Against.
Councillor Leishon?
Four.
Councillor Jane Locke?
Four.
Councillor Tony Locke?
Four.
Councillor Lovridge?
Four.
Councillor Munt?
Four.
Councillor Napa?
Against.
Councillor Nicholson?
Against.
Councillor Noel?
Against.
Councillor Oliver?
Against.
Councillor Barham?
Against.
Councillor Paul?
Against.
Councillor Priya Sankey?
Four.
Councillor Pullin?
Against.
Councillor Redman?
Four.
Councillor Revans?
Four.
Councillor Rigby?
Four.
Councillor Roddell?
Four.
Councillor Taylor? Councillor Thorne, are you present? Just checking the chat. I can't see any entry from councillor Thorne, so I'll record him as absent. Councillor Verdon?
Against.
Councillor Vijay? Councillor Vijay? Record as absent. Councillor Wallace?
Against.
Councillor Weddercop?
Four.
Councillor Josh Williams?
Against.
Councillor Rod Williams?
Against.
And finally, councillor Woodman?
Against.
And if I just review those votes. Okay, if I can just report that that amendment was not carried, it was rejected. There were 28 votes against the recommendation, 19 in favour, one abstention, and therefore that amendment is rejected.
Okay. Turning to the substantive motion that's before us, that's brought along by John, councillor John, and councillor Tessamunt. And I will ask John just to repeat his motion so we get it right. As set out in the chair's schedule is probably the best way to do that, which you should all see. John, you happy with that, John Clark?
Yes, as set out in schedule, yeah.
Thank you, John. Thank you. And I'm going to ask for Scott Woodridge to run the vote on that, please, now.
Thank you, Chair. Again, as published as agenda item 10, requisitioned item, you'll see that there were three recommendations set out in the report. And again, I shall now again just call alphabetically for members, and if you could indicate whether you are in favour of or for the recommendations in that requisitioned item, or whether you are against, or whether you are abstaining. So initially, I shall start with councillor Best in terms of the first three.
Four.
Councillor Bowden? Councillor Clayton?
Against.
Councillor Caswell?
Against.
Councillor Chilcutt?
Against.
Councillor Clark?
Four.
Councillor Coles?
Four.
Councillor Dance?
Four.
Councillor Dimory?
Four.
Councillor Filmer?
Against.
Councillor Fothergill?
Against.
Councillor Fraschini?
Against.
Councillor Govea?
Four.
Councillor Grosskop?
Against.
Councillor Hall?
Against.
Councillor Ham?
Against.
Councillor Healy?
Against.
Councillor Hughett Cooper?
Against.
Councillor James Hunt?
Against.
Councillor John Hunt?
Abstain.
Councillor Huxtable?
Against.
Councillor Kendall?
Four.
Councillor Lawrence?
Against.
Councillor Lewis?
Against.
Councillor Leishon?
Four.
Councillor Jane Locke?
Four.
Councillor Tony Locke?
Four.
Councillor Lovridge?
Four.
Councillor Munt?
Four.
Councillor Napa?
Against.
Councillor Nicholson?
Against.
Councillor Noel?
Against.
Councillor Oliver?
Against.
Councillor Barham?
Against.
Councillor Paul?
Against.
Councillor Priya Sankey?
Four.
Councillor Pullin?
Against.
Against.
Councillor Redman.
For, please.
Councillor Evans.
For.
Councillor Rigby.
For.
Councillor Ruddle.
For.
Councillor Taylor.
As Chair, I abstain.
Councillor Verdon.
Against.
Councillor Vijay.
Against.
Councillor Wallace.
Against.
Councillor Weddercop.
For.
Councillor Josh Williams.
Against.
Councillor Rod Williams.
Against.
Councillor Woodman.
Against.
If you just bear with me, I should just tally those votes. So I shall report to the meeting in terms of all those recommendations, that requisitioned item is rejected and not carried, there were 29 votes against, 18 for, and two abstentions, therefore that motion is rejected, Chair.
Thank you, Monitoring Officer, I now move to item 11 on our Euro agenda, that is the Report of the Leader and Cabinet for Items of Information, and it will be introduced by councillor David Fothergill, Leader of the Council.
Thank you, Chair, I'll just let the interpreters just switch over there, I think, so thank you, Chair, and I'm very happy to take the reports housed presented in the pack, and I'm happy to answer any question which has already been submitted on my behalf, and I don't think there are any, so unless there's anything else arising, I'm happy to move on to the next person.
Councillor Mandy Chilcutt, and I'll also ask you to respond to councillor Locke's question, please, councillor Chilcutt.
Thank you, would you just like me to respond to the question, or is Jane going to present it, Chair, just checking? I'm happy to.
Jane, Jane should present.
As read.
Please, Jane.
Thank you.
If you're happy with that.
Yes, of course, thank you, so thank you, Jane, for your question, so the A Block project, as we know, was completed in June 2020, within the original budget for the scheme in spite of cost challenges associated with the coronavirus pandemic and the first national lockdown, it's important to note that a significant proportion of the cost related to the replacement of the historic heating system for the campus, which as we know serves Shire Hall, B and C blocks, as well as A block, as well as other essential maintenance, and this is far more than a refurbishment, the investment has enabled the council to free up space elsewhere in the county hall campus, some of which will be used by a local NHS partner under a 10-year licence agreement for office accommodation, which page 30 in the previous reports is included, appendix two of paper A on your agenda set out an annual net saving of £280,000 from this agreement, income which helps to balance the budget put before the council today, and which over the life of the licence agreement will pay a significant proportion of the project cost, further savings associated with the investment include reduced energy costs following the replacement of the heating system, which are also included within the budget proposals put before council today, and which supports the council's carbon reduction commitments, the property function is currently reviewing office accommodation for council staff on the county hall campus in the light of new ways of working emerging from the pandemic, and we will continue to work with the NHS and other local partners to review further opportunities for collaboration and income generation, thank you, Chair.
Councillor Chilcutt, I'm going to move to councillor John Woodman.
I believe there's another question, Chair, from Jane.
I'm sorry, I, yes, let's just look at my schedule a second, thank you. Yes, councillor Jane Locke, you've got your second question, as per the schedule, do you want to leave it to stand as per the schedule?
Yes, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, that, could council be told how much Somerset received from the government Brexit transition grant, and how was it spent, councillor Chilcutt?
Thank you, Chair, so thank you again, Jane, for your question to both myself and David, and I will respond for both of us, in 1920 Somerset County Council received from MHCLG £262,500 for Brexit-related activities, the funding has been spent to date on staff time to plan for Brexit, support for businesses and the economy, and promoting the EUSS scheme, the remainder was held in case of any unforeseen disruptive challenges were encountered at the end of the transition period on the 31st of December 2020, the remaining balance is now being allocated to further promote the EU settlement scheme, to assist people to make applications to the scheme, and for business and economic support activities, thank you, Chair. Chair, I would just point out.
Sorry, is that Jane Locke?
No, it's Tessa Munt.
Tessa, councillor Munt, go ahead.
Thank you, I just, it's from 2020, not 1920, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor John Clark, you've got your hand up.
Yes, Chair, I didn't know whether now's the time to ask councillor Paul a question, or is that when she presents her paper?
No, this is councillor Chilcutt's pitch at the moment, if you don't mind waiting, please, councillor.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, councillor John Woodman, any questions for John Woodman, please?
I believe there's one from Lee Redman, if Lee wants a written answer, or wants to present it, or what he wants to do.
Councillor Redman?
Chair, thank you, sorry for the verbal question, I missed the window for formal submission, and my question relates to residential disabled parking bays, and I'm happy to receive a written response if necessary, my question, some time ago when the council was battling against a potential section 114 notice, highways as part of their contribution to cut costs, actioned to complete statutory works only, as part of this, the decision was taken to stop approving residential disabled parking bays, I have since then had to try and explain to a number of blue badge holders, sorry, blue badge holding local residents, this position, as it is still in place, considering the healthier financial position council finds itself in, can the cabinet member please advise when we would be able to start setting new residential disabled parking bays, although advisory, they do help disabled residents park nearer their homes, and are seen by many as a lifeline, and I apologise for the cat interrupting me, thank you.
Well, thank you, Lee, for that question, the decision to no longer deal with individual requests for advisory residential disabled parking bays was not initiated by any part of any cost-cutting exercise, or the need to make savings, but was part of the policy review and implementation plan, traffic engineers no longer deal with individuals and very local traffic engineering requests that benefit a small number of people, including requests for new amendments to existing signing, lining, speed limits, HGVs, restrictions, disabled parking bays, et cetera, instead they focus on developing a strategic coordinated approach which ensures we use our resources in the most effective way, and focus on those schemes which have the greatest benefit to the public and businesses in Somerset, this will include addressing evidence-based road safety and congestion issues, where there is evidence of safety issues, these requests will be considered and prioritised for implementation, in the past we received a lot of requests for these bays from anybody with a blue badge, and it was taking many, many hours of officer time to deal with these requests, once designed, these bays would be left on the street when people moved homes, and therefore some streets had lots of bays, and the process simply became unmanageable, in very attenuating circumstances, we have allowed new residential disabled bays, but only when they've been supported by a medical professional, I hope this clears up my position, and sorry for the phone going off.
Thank you for the clarification, could I have the written answer, please, thank you.
Of course you can.
Thank you both, are there any more questions for councillor John Woodman, please?
My hand is up.
Try and see whose hand that is.
Councillor Kendall.
Andy, would you, Andy Kendall, would you please speak?
Yeah, John, did I hear you right then, when you said you no longer go out and repaint yellow lines, I'm sure you said something to the contrary of that.
No, 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 the maintenance thing is different from those implementation of new lines and signs, et cetera, so if you've got, if you've got something you need to report to the council, do it in the usual fashion and we'll have a look at it.
Right, okay, so you still repair, like when, we got lots of faded yellow lines now in Yeovil now, and whether people get fined for parking on when they're not there, is another thing, but you carry out those small repairs to lines that have worn?
Well, until we've had a look at it, Andy, I think the best thing to do, if you send me an email, I'll make sure we send out the engineers and we have a look at it and we get back to you.
Okay, so something you said that just put me off a little bit, then, that's fine, okay, thanks, John.
No worries.
Thank you, councillors, any more questions for councillor Woodman? I'm seeing no hands coming up, so thank you councillor Woodman, I'm going to move to councillor Francis Nicholson, Francis Nicholson, please. So I assume there's no questions for Francis? I'll move to.
Questions, is it, or any on children's matters for Fay who can't be here?
Okay, councillors, I don't know if you heard that, councillor Francis Nicholson has offered to take any questions if you may have for Fay who can't be here, so if there are any questions for Fay, please raise them now.
On children's.
On children's matters, on children's matters. Nobody's saying anything, nothing, okay, thank you very much for making that offer, Francis Nicholson, councillor, councillor Christine Lawrence, any questions for councillor Christine Lawrence? I hear none, I don't see any signs, so I'll move to councillor David Hall, and he will also respond to councillor Redman's and councillor Locke's questions, councillor David Hall, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman, I think councillor Locke's question has already been responded to by Mandy Chilcutt, are you with me, Chairman?
Yes, yes, thank you very much, indeed.
So I, as you quite rightly say, as both of these questions relate to Hinkley, I've spoken to councillor Paul, and I will take both the answers, if that's okay.
Could I speak to the question, please?
Thank you, and Lee Redman.
Thank you, councillor Hall, I'm sorry, just, Chair, just to put some clarity around the questions, I'm not adding any further questions, it'll still be the three, councillor Hall, EDF Energy propose to increase the number of staff on site above limits set in the development consent order, but the associated redistribution from other areas, the proposal will see Bridgewater squeezed most, I'm hoping that local, bless you, local county members will be included in all consultations to evaluate and mitigate impacts of the 300% increase in the workers on the Bridgewater community, I have for many months been requesting local member involvement in these discussions, council issued a briefing note to all members, but until EDF outlines their wish to rush through the substantial change in the DCO that will see their workforce increase from the current limit of 5,600 to 8,500, but with the some shuffling from outside areas, an increase of near 300% in the number of non-home-based staff living in the direct Bridgewater town area, to be clear, I'm not saying we should not allow the increase, I'm asking Somerset County Council to demand EDF hold a reasonable consultation and discuss mitigation, let Bridgewater and the surrounding areas understand what is proposed, and what mitigation may be needed, due to the way Bridgewater has worked to support the development, a legacy project in Bridgewater would be a great place to start, I'm happy that to admit that EDF have helped fund some amazing things in Bridgewater and surrounding areas, based on the previous numbers set out in the development consent order, many of our community are benefiting from the biggest infrastructure development this country has seen, but there are many who cannot afford to rent locally, many that are struggling to find local homes, yes, Sedgmore have provided 4,000 more bed spaces, affordable and local, but these are already full with local people, Hinkley C's campuses, sorry, Hinkley C campus sites are full, the demand on local properties that even the 1,000 additional workers would have is massive, I offer the questions as written and look forward to serious involvement in these negotiations, thank you for your time.
Thank you for that, Lee, happy to answer that, this is a very important question, the joint councils, so that's Somerset County Council, Sedgmore District Council, Somerset Western Taunton, and North Somerset Council, continue to work with EDF Energy about their intention to increase the size of its workforce at Hinkley Point C, beyond the number that was assessed in the development consent order, the work streams already established are centred around accommodation, workforce development, transport, health, community safety, and environment, and we are seeking to understand the key assumptions and methodologies to be used in their assessment, and the positive actions that EDF propose to take, it is of course for EDF to engage with the community about its intentions to increase the size of its workforce, that has already included virtual drop-in opportunities that were widely advertised, consideration is being given by the joint councils about how best to ensure engagement of their members over and above any activity undertaken by EDF Energy, that will provide an opportunity to explore our collective experiences of the project to date, and any concerns about the workforce increase envisaged, beg your pardon, balanced with positive opportunities this will provide, the joint councils wrote to the Planning Inspectorate in July 2020 about EDF's intentions, and the Planning Inspectorate's response signposted council to the relevant regulations which would be used by the Planning Inspectorate and the Secretary of State, should an application from EDF be necessary or forthcoming, notably at the moment, the response does not highlight any concerns from the Planning Inspectorate in respect to the discussions that are currently in place between the joint councils and EDF in taking the issue forward, we've therefore concluded that we should continue our work with EDF on the work streams and assessments, there is however still some way to go with these discussions, and only when the assessments are complete, will we be able to agree together what our next action should be, and indeed consider whether the change is material, it is therefore too early to consider what additional mitigation might be necessary, or conclude if the workforce uplift would be acceptable, in respect of your question about the issues and lessons learnt, I personally have been involved with this project for the past 11 years, and as you would expect, there have been many lessons from all parties during that period, far too many, of course, to list them all today, one lesson which bears repetition, however, is the importance of avoiding snap judgements and decisions before all the facts in a situation are known and properly assessed, I would reiterate therefore that it is not appropriate at this stage to pre-ent the outcome of the assessment by predicting what the impact will be, or indeed what mitigation may be necessary and appropriate, turning to the health-related aspects of your question, as part of the proposed workforce expansion, NHS and public health are engaged with EDF through a standing group, and will review the proposals as they relate to the health services and public health, that group has been advised that the original health impact assessment for the project is being reviewed, and they will then critically appraise that review when it's available, once again, it would not be appropriate to be preemptive in judging issues for additional mitigation ahead of the review process, with regards to COVID-19, Somerset County Council Public Health, Public Health England, and environmental health colleagues from Somerset Western Taunton Council, and indeed Sedgmore District Council, have regular and frequent contact with the COVID- Sedgmore District Council have regular and frequent contact with the COVID office at HPC and have developed a close and effective working relationship to review cases and controls through a standing outbreak control team. I trust that rather lengthy answer gives you the assurances you're seeking. I know that you will make every effort to ensure your colleagues and constituents are kept accurately informed of the position as matters develop. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Hall. Could I have a written response, please? Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Thank you both. Councillor Anne Bowne. Councillor Anne Bowne, you have your hand up.
Yes, I did, Chairman. Thank you. I'm a bit bemused actually to listen to councillor Redmond this afternoon to understand why he's asking these questions when he has had invitations to virtual meetings to explain the situation. He also sits on the community forum where we have this explained to us and also the transport forum. I believe that these are all there, ready for us to ask questions, delve into things, and I find it totally unnecessary to ask this question this afternoon.
Thank you councillor Bowne. Councillor Redmond, you have a right to reply.
I'm pleased that councillor Bowne is keeping account of the committees that I'm a member of, Chair, and I welcome that. However, if she was at the last drop-in on Thursday at Hinkley, she would have heard we made the same comments there. I was at the previous drop-in on Tuesday and I do make every effort. And also, as a town councillor, we've been working with the EDF and everyone else to try and find a way forward. The reason for raising the question today, Chair, was very simple. It's the fact that hopefully my objections and my position will be noted here at county and will help affect and guide any future negotiations. So thank you.
Thank you, councillors. I am going to now ask, are there any more questions for councillor David Hall, please? I'm looking at the list. I'm not seeing any hands coming up. Right, in that case, I'm going to move to councillor David Huxtable. Any questions for councillor David Huxtable, please? Have a legacy hand or a hand on the side there somewhere.
Chairman, it's me, if that helps.
You're asking a question, David, but I wanted to-
No, I just wanted to have an opportunity to say a couple of words, because I think it's appropriate. We, we as adults have had a challenging year. I expect everybody understands that. We've mentioned it many times today. And what I would just like to say that they have responded brilliantly, again, as previously described, to the crisis. And we, as a service, welcome the money this council has granted for us today, going forward, and especially the invest to save capital bit will ultimately help us to provide a better service for less money going forward, which I think is, is essential. And also, Chairman, to put a marker in the sand that I will be wanting to say something under item 14, the Adult Scrutiny Committee. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So I'll give everybody another chance if they've got questions for councillor David Huxtable. Obviously, Bill Revens, Bill Revens, please. Councillor Bill Revens.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure the observer is well-read every Sunday in the Huxtable household. I wonder whether Mr. Huxtable had a chance to read a quite concerning article at the weekend about, which I think was based on a MenCap report about DNR notices being placed on people who were not judged to be in a, to have the capacity to be able to give that instruction themselves without the knowledge of their families. Can you provide any, any context or assurance about the local context of that report? Thank you.
Councillor Huxtable.
Chairman, sadly not part of my Sunday reading, so I'm unfamiliar with the article. I, I am familiar with the subject and I'm sure that we will get a response to Bill from the officers, but I can't give him one off the top of my, off the cuff.
Thank you. I, I hope that's understandable, Bill, and I will ask councillor Huxtable to look into that and perhaps report back to if he, if he finds anything.
Of course. I should have finished my, my sentence by saying I would, I would be happy to accept a written answer to the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Right, I'm going to now move to, Fay Perbrick, we know, isn't here and the opportunity to ask her questions was kindly put forward by Francis Nicholson. And so I'm going to move now to councillor Claire Paul.
Chair, sorry, it's the lead here. I was just going to say if there are any other questions for Fay's other half of her portfolio on transformation, I'm happy to take those. Children's, I'll leave to Francis.
Councillors, you heard councillor David Fothergill then. Have you any questions that you wish to ask of him with regards to that part of councillor Fay Perbrick's role, please? I see no hands up. I see nobody there. And as I was saying, I will move it back to councillor Claire Paul to ask her to present her annual report. Agenda item is item 13 as part of this item and answer any questions regarding her area of responsibilities. Councillor Paul.
Thank you very much, Chair. And indeed, I'm very happy to introduce my annual report, which is agenda item 13. We all know the last 12 months have probably been the most challenging time ever for many of us. This annual public health report demonstrates the Herculean effort by the public health team to manage the COVID pandemic, but in addition, clearly sets out all the other necessary public health work which is continued all the while in order to protect, support and improve the health and wellbeing of Somerset residents. Quite often, within public health, we will only see the health improvement work. This year, we have seen all three domains of public health work. Health improvement work, health protection work, which is usually very much behind the scenes, and shown the healthcare, public health work that we do, providing specialist public health advice to our health and social care system. We have, of course, had some distressing times with this work. However, we have had real positives which have been embraced because of the pandemic, such as the work for our homeless population and the way we have pushed for a more active, healthier population, which in turn has supported elements of our climate agenda. Personally, the work on the domestic abuse, no closed doors campaign stands out, and I have been proud to promote this and all the other work detailed within the report. Everything in this report tells us just how important this work is and how important it is to keep driving forwards into hopefully improved times ahead. Trudy and the team are a truly inspirational collection of individuals of whom I'm constantly in awe, and on behalf of many throughout Somerset, I thank them. And thank you, Chair.
Councillor Paul, thank you very much for your report. Are there any questions for councillor Paul, please? Councillor John Clark. Followed by councillor Lee Redman. Councillor Clark first.
Well, thank you councillor Paul, for your report. And I would certainly echo your comments about the amazing work of the public health. Can I also add that the workshop that was presented around adverse childhood experience was really informative and certainly the, the two pilot projects, I hope, will really demonstrate the importance of this work in dealing with trauma for young, for children in childhood. I also note your comment about how COVID has really demonstrated and highlighted the inequalities around our society in Somerset in terms of deprivation and health needs. I wanted to just ask you a couple of questions and forgive me if I didn't have the moment to put them in. So I welcome the investment that is now going to be taking place in terms of energy investment and energy efficiency schemes and the £4.4 million that's going to those things. That's really, really good to see. And also the active travel, 1.5 million monies, walking and cycling initiatives. So, so I just wanted to know really, the first question around that walking and cycling initiatives, how would that money be distributed? Is it about supporting local districts in walking and cycling initiatives as the council has already done through some government funding, including in Froom, I would add, which is really great in terms of safer street scheme, which may be one of the first in the county. So yes, I would like to know how that money may be spent. And I appreciate you may not give a full answer today, but I'd welcome a written response. I also want to ask about, is there any consideration? I note that there is still £1 million reserve allocated to climate emergency, and I wanted to ask if there's been any consideration for on-street EV charging. The Office for Low-Emission Vehicles has allocated £20 million for on-street parking, on-street charging points. And I wanted to ask whether that could be a consideration in any strategy around EV charging points. And I appreciate that the county is looking at EV charging for its own properties, but this is about on-street charging. We really need to start getting an infrastructure in place to support people moving towards electric vehicles. The last question, I note the comments in another, I think in your paper or another paper, that money's been put towards trees in terms of ash dieback, which is really good and maintenance. But I just wondered, can you give an update on the baby tree project, which was agreed in full council, whereby this council agreed to plant trees celebrating the births of every child and to include all children born during, over the next three years. And last year was the first year of that project being put in place. But I have not received, I hadn't seen any information about the, the planting of those trees. I think it would amount to around 5,000 across Somerset. So I'd welcome an answer to that question, please. If not a full answer today, then a written response would be great. But perhaps your observation at this point. Thank you.
Councillor Paul.
Thank you ever so much, John. I've been frantically trying to write down notes as you've been, you know, coming out with all of those questions. And I appreciate all of the questions. And, you know, of course, I thank you for them. Firstly, the ACES workshop, brilliant. I'm so pleased that you found that really useful. And you're quite right, the, you know, the pilots and the work that's happening within that will undoubtedly hold us in good stead with ACES as we move forward. Then you went on to, I'm sorry, I'm ticking off as I'm going. You went on to COVID inequalities, but I'm sorry, I really didn't get actually what the question was. But we do, of course, know that COVID has shown us inequalities. So I'll re-listen and I will, of course, give you a full written answer to all of your questions when I can re-go through and, and actually get them all down. The £1 million for the climate in reserves and the active travel work, that is all set there for us to, to ensure that we are getting the right systems in place, both from the climate perspective and, of course, from our, our health and wellbeing perspective. You know, the last thing we wish to do is put cycle routes, for example, in completely inappropriate places, which actually won't help anybody. Ash dieback, again, I'd have to come back to you with that one. I've just literally written ash dieback. Yes, we are working on the EV strategy. And again, I will provide a full written answer for you for that one. And again, and I apologize, but correct me, maybe you and I can email and take this offline, but when you were talking about the baby tree, I'm not sure if you were talking about the chairman's planting scheme, which was at William Wallace's time. But email me or I will re-listen to the questions and of course I'll give you a full written answer. But thank you for bringing it all up.
Thank you, Claire. I appreciate it off the cuff.
Thank you. I'm going to move now to Lee Redman, councillor Lee Redman.
Chair, thank you. I support the comments from councillor Clark about the adverse childhood experiences presentation. It was amazing. I wanted to reinforce the comments from the cabinet member about the amazing work the public health officers have done during this pandemic. I want to add my thanks for the open and communicative way they deal with questions in the incident room. I've tried to respond locally to rumours and the team have helped me respond in a timely manner. And the comms team through our amazing, and the communications, sorry, through our equally amazing comms team have been, have been helped greatly. So I just wanted to add my thanks, Chair. Not a question, but thank you.
Thank you councillor Lee Redman. I'm moving to councillor Huxtable now.
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you for that presentation, Claire. And thank you. I know we're all appreciative of all the millions that we've agreed to spend on this green agenda. And indeed, as councillor Clark, the green man from Froom mentioned, you know, we are working very closely with our district councils to, because we're all in this together and we can't do it on our own. The question I need to ask, and I probably should know the answer to this, but I don't, is how much of the district councils committed to our projects? Thank you, Chairman.
Do you wish to reply?
Sorry, there we go. Thank you. It was just a moment for the unmute and camera to come on. Thank you, David. And yeah, I will come back to you with a full breakdown of what the districts have and haven't put in.
Thank you again councillor Claire Paul. I see no other questions for councillor Paul. Just quickly checking, I don't see any. So I'm going to now, to say we're following the debate, the council, I'm going to ask you to note the leader and cabinet's report for their, for your information, and that it's also considered agenda item 13, which was the cabinet member for public health and wellbeing and climate change as part of that agenda item. So now I'm going to move to item 12, which is the annual report of the Constitution and Standards Committee. You'll find page 263 will assist and I'm going to invite councillor William Wallace to introduce the report. Councillor Wallace.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Nigel. I present this annual report of the Constitution and Standards Committee for the period from June 2019 to December 2020. Of course, the reason for this extension is due to the impact of the COVID-19. Otherwise, it would have been reported earlier. Rather than go through all the details of our report, which you can see on pages 263 to 265, I would just like to say, to first of all, thank all the members of our cross-party committee for their help over this period of time, and of course, our officers, in particular Scott Woldridge, who is, Scott Woldridge, I should say, and the supporting officers to help us with the committee. So, as I said, rather than going through all the details, I gladly invite any questions. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wallace. Has anyone, any questions for councillor Wallace, please? I'm not seeing any hands coming up. Councillor Fothergill.
Chairman, it's just to acknowledge the work that William and his committee do and to thank him and all of them for their input. And I think it goes without saying, it's a, it's a sort of unrecognized committee in the work that it does, I think, often, but it does a really important job for us. So thank you to William for leading it and thank you to those that serve on it.
Thank you. Noted. Good words. Right, well, there being no further questions for councillor Wallace. I'll thank him for his report and for his colleagues for their input. And I'm going to move to item, well, we've dealt with item 13, so I'm going to go straight to item 14. That is the report of the scrutiny for policies, adults and health committee. And this is, you'll find on page 281, and councillor Hazel Prior-Sankey will introduce her report. Councillor Hazel Prior-Sankey.
Thank you very much, Chair. I present my report. There's nothing to add except that I would like to add a personal thanks to all those people who are working both in the health sectors, social workers and- social workers and carers in our, in our residential homes and who go into people's homes as well for the sterling work they've done. They've worked tirelessly. And I know from my own experience how distressing sometimes it can be for people to not only catch COVID, but then to go back to a care home and find that several residents have died. And it is incredibly hard for some of these people. So I pay tribute to the tremendous sterling work that they all do. And just finally to say that our next meeting has an item on the integrated care system, which went through Health and Wellbeing Board. But I think it's really important that scrutiny has a look at this. I think it's very exciting and is certainly worthwhile. So if members want to plug into the scrutiny meeting, you'd be very, very welcome, and at any other time. Thank you. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for councillor Hazel, please? David Huxtable, I believe you had questions earlier.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, it would be remiss of me not to thank Hazel for your chairmanship of, of this committee, which has stood us all in good stead. And until today, I, I thought we were on quite good terms. But I think I have to rise at this occasion in defence of my senior management team, who I imagine at this moment are feeling quite annoyed at the, as Hazel described, the paucity of information that is provided not only at her scrutiny committee, but at a pre-scrutiny committee. And I imagine also at the weekly updates that her, her spokesman at Adult Social Care and group leader Jane Locke has with the, with Mel, the director. So I just wondered whether, which part of, how much more information did one need? Thank you.
Thank you. I think it would have been really helpful if the information that is now included in the document pack for full council, particularly on the issue of the discovery Help to Work part, if that had been made available to us at our scrutiny meeting. When we had our pre-meet, well, there wasn't actually a pre-meet for that meeting because the papers weren't written and weren't available.
Background noise. Whoever's got their microphone on, tell it off me. Thank you.
Thank you. There, there wasn't actually a pre-meeting because everything except the budget had been scrapped. And the budget paper came forward late without me seeing it before it was printed. And it had very little information on it. It was simply a table and that was part of a whole. Now, the paper that we have for all council is very informative, very useful. And I just say that it would have been much better and we would have been able to better scrutinize that part of the budget proposal had we had that paper at the time we were looking at the budget as a scrutiny committee. I know everybody's been working hard. It's not a criticism particularly of any officer other than to say generally, I think that scrutiny on this budget issue was probably short-changed in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, my name was mentioned.
Yeah, councillor Jane Locke, I'll come to you in a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hazel Prior-Sankey, thank you for your, your comments. Councillor Jane Locke. Councillor Jane Locke.
Thank you, Chair. As my name was mentioned, perhaps I could come back on that. I certainly don't have weekly briefings with Mel. I'm not sure why David is under that illusion. The chance I have to speak to Mel is just before scrutiny meeting for half an hour. But if he thinks that I should up that to weekly, then I am more than happy to spare the time to do that. And he needs be under no other illusion that I will not be raising these issues at the Discovery Assurance Board that we hold now to hold Discovery's feet to the fire on their performance in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, councillors, there being no other questions and hands raised, I will thank councillor Hazel Prior-Sankey for her report. Many thanks to you. And we will move now to the item 15, which is the report of the Scrutiny for Policies and Place Committee. And I'm going to invite councillor Anna Grosskopf to introduce her report. Page 287 will help you.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Chairman. Members, the report is before you. Our work influences all the decisions made by the whole council. The reports that come to us, our main aim has been that they come to us before the decision is made so that we can comment and, and influence the decision makers. And hopefully each cabinet member will come and make those reports. One of our main tasks is to scrutinize the finance of all the council. And I will say for the first time in many, many years, this has been so easy and it has been a very robust budget. And I actually thank the 151 officer and all his support officers who provide these reports and have spent many hours discussing with us and explaining them so that our members understand the finances more easily. It's been a pleasure to meet with the other two scrutiny chairs as we hope to engage more, to learn from our experiences, to have more administrative problems dealt with and to scrutinize more of the council. I would actually encourage any member to bring any, any subject they wish to, that fits in with policy in place. And please, please attend our meetings as we do tend to try and make a difference. I thank all of the team who have been so readily at our meetings and for their in-depth discussion and help with every subject. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Anna Grosskopf. Are there any questions for councillor Grosskopf, please? Councillor Mandy Chilcutt.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to thank Anna and the whole of the committee, actually, for their scrutinization of the budget over the whole year. It's been really appreciated. I would also say really for all scrutiny committees and picking up from the, the previous comments that if there's any information that isn't there, we will ask at the end of every report, is there more that's needed? And also really for reassurance for the public, the budget did go through three scrutiny meetings, two cabinet sessions and also two members briefing sessions. And I know the 151 officer wrote to all councillors checking there were any outstanding matters and queries. So I hope that in future, if there are matters and queries, please get in touch with myself or the 151 officer in, we'll certainly respond to those. But thank you to the committee. You've really been a help and it's always appreciated.
Thank you, councillor Chilcutt. Any further questions for councillor Grosskopf? Councillor Lee Redman, are you asking a question because you've appeared on camera?
I was, I was being keen, Chair.
You were keen. Well, just, just hang on a minute, hang on a minute. Let's, let me just finish off that there are no further questions for councillor Grosskopf. And I'd like to thank her for her work. And now I'm going to ask councillor Lee Redman if you're there to join us.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to present our report. I'll try not to mention unitaries or name anyone so that we get the meeting over with quicker. In real terms, I align myself with the comments of the previous chair in the fact that member participation in all of our meetings is really good. I draw members' attention to section 2.5 of the report that talks about the adverse childhood experiences presentation that has already been mentioned. And as always, thank officers for their participation in, in community governance and of course, officers of the, the children's services, et cetera. We're heading for an interesting time. We have a task and finish group about to start. I've always got the call out for further members. We're still short of some governors, so that opportunity is there. And Chair, thank you again for your time and I'm happy to take any questions. Surely members have them.
Thank you, councillor Redman. We've got councillor Frances Nicholson with a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not so much a, a question as an expression of great thanks to Lee as chairman and to the scrutiny committee and the work that they put in, particularly when they look at task and finish groups. And it's a tribute, the, the kind of work that they do and the interest that they have and particularly Lee's own absolute devotion to this and enthusiasm for the work. I, I can only acknowledge that and say what a tribute it is to our staff as well and to the work that they do. And the two can only enhance each other. And, and while I'm at it, I just want to say thank you to everybody who has voted for the budget that the increase for children, which we badly need. It's been a difficult year. It will be a difficult year next year. And I am particularly glad that the council is backing the needs of children with the budget increase that we have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Frances Nicholson. Are there any more questions for Lee Redman, please? No, I see none at all. Well, Lee, thank you very much for your report. Before I draw proceedings to the close, again, I wish to thank Karen and Anne Smith, who have been doing all through this meeting, constantly signing and passing on what messages councillors have been saying to our community. And I, I think we are indebted to you both for the service that you have done for the community today. Many, many thanks. I will tell you now that our next meeting will be at 10 o'clock on the 19th of May, 2021. I see David Fothergill would like to say a word.
Chairman, it's just to say thank you to, to you for sharing this meeting today. I know that it's perhaps been more challenging than, than you'd have hoped. And I'd like to say thank you for Peter Clayton for stepping in and getting us through that, that short interim period. And can I send you every best wish over the next few months? Our thoughts are with you. And we look forward to seeing you back there shortly.
Thank you all. I wish you all and have a good spring break. Thank you, councillors. Thank you, interpreters. Thank you, members of the public. Thank you, officers.
Take care, Nigel.
Goodbye.
Thank you, David.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman.
Thanks, Nigel.
Goodbye, Chair.
Take care, Nigel.